Good evening. I see we have a packed house today or this evening. Ms. Bowers, I call this meeting, Hampton School Board meeting, to order. Ms. Bowers, please call the row.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present. This time we will have the invocation and I turn the meeting over to our school board representative, Mr. Xavier Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Smith. In the season of this eventful meeting, it would not be the same if we didn't have one of our students give us the invocation today. Today, we have Zanay Thurman. She is a 5th grade student at Burbank Elementary. Today, she will be joined by our student representative Natalie Kidd. And Natalie will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then Zanay will lead us in the invocation for tonight. So if everyone could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hi.
Hello.
My name is Zanay Thurman and I'm a 5th grade student at Burbank Elementary School. Melinda Gates said, "A woman with a voice is by definition a strong woman." As a young lady that loves to sing, I plan to use my voice to share my hopes, my goals, my dreams, and my aspirations. My biggest hope is to make my mom proud and be successful. In life, I want to be a professional singer because I've grown up around music. My great-aunts were in a gospel music group, my grandfather loved music, and my dad is a musical artist. Music is the base of my heart and soul. When I reach my goal as being a singer, I plan to use my voice to break out of my shell, help empower women, and influence others in a positive way. My dream in life is mainly be happy. The fortune and fame are nice, but being happy is what's mainly important to me. My biggest inspiration is my mother. She goes through a lot, but she always makes it out on top. I want to make her proud because she means the world to me and she has always been there for me. As long as I keep up my grades and stay focused, I know I can achieve my goals. I hope to inspire my classmates, my community, and this world as I use my voice to help others. I can't wait to come back when I graduate in the year 2025 and make you all proud. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Zanay. And I have to say, man, you are very articulate. That was awesome.
Thank you.
And your goals and ambitions of life are wonderful. Well, we're at the end of the school year and you're a rising 6th grader, so what middle school will you be going to next?
Next year, I'll be attending Spratley Gifted Center.
All right. You'll be a C-Hulk. Congratulations. So as a 5th grader, what was your favorite memory of 5th grade this year?
Mainly meeting new people. The people at my school this year are different than what I expected them to be, but I'm kind of glad that I got to meet all of them.
That's awesome. You have any good plans for the summer this year?
I actually will be attending the CW Scott Center for summer camp.
Okay. Awesome. Awesome. Thanks so much. Before you have a seat, I want you to introduce the people that are sitting behind you today, if you don't mind.
Today, I have my brother Xavier, my mother Divinity, my teacher Shay Robinson, and my principal Ashley Ide.
Can y'all stand to be recognized? Thank you so much. Well, Zanay, I wish you the best of luck at Spratley Gifted Center next year and I know that you will achieve all of those dreams and goals that you just said to us. And hopefully, you will continue to use your voice to be an inspiration to your peers at Spratley and continue to do the right thing and to inspire other people. Thanks so much for coming today and I hope you have a wonderful summer, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Mr. Williams. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we adopt item 1.03. 1.03, the agenda. Is there any discussion? Here and Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is recognition and in the absence of Ms. Kelly Goral, Dr. Cajiano will assist me in doing the recognition tonight. So Cajiano? We begin this evening with the Althea Stevenson Award for Excellence in Education. Nominations were submitted by anyone in the Hampton City School community, including students, parents, parent associations, school administrators, and colleagues. Dr. Cajiano and Ms. Althea, Ms. Bethia, the SEH here, please join me. Already, Dr. Cajiano is on stage. Ms. Bethia, will you please join us with the presentation and assist in the recognition?
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Samuels shared, Mrs. Althea Bethia is the chair of our SEAC Committee. SEAC, the acronym, stands for Special Education Advisory Committee. I'd like to thank Mr. Samuels and as he stated tonight, we are recognizing the recipient of the first annual Althea Stevenson Award for Excellence in Special Education. The award was established to acknowledge and show appreciation for the excellence of educators, instructional assistants, and others who truly embrace the division's mission, every child, every day, whatever it takes, as they ensure the full acceptance, authentic inclusion, and success of students with disabilities. At this time, I'll go ahead and turn the microphone back over to, or to, over to Mrs. Bethia.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited and I'm nervous and I'm excited and I'm overjoyed to be doing this. Mrs. Althea Stevenson was an incredible educator. We first met her in 2012 when my grandson was about three years old. She only had him for about six weeks, but the impact that she had on him was absolutely incredible. And it continued, and this was at Basset Elementary School, it continued. But tonight, as, after she passed suddenly at the end of the 2015-2016 school year, her family not only lost a jewel, but the school division lost one also. And so, we looked for people who embodied much, many of the qualities that she had as a special educator. It is one thing to be an educator, but when you're dealing with children with various levels of disabilities, it takes a special type of educator. And so, tonight, we are here to give the first award, and we hope it's going to be an annual award, for the Althea Stevenson Award for Excellence in Special Education. And we are just so grateful that her family allowed us to use her name for this award. There's a family member who's going to come up and join us representing the Stevenson And I've already told how the award came to be. You know, it just kind of dropped into my spirit. Good evening.
Good evening. On behalf of the family, we just want to say that we are very thankful for this opportunity. She was very dedicated, very committed. And being a former employer in Hampton City Schools, I know the challenges that the teachers face as well as our students and families. So we just want to say to everybody from our hearts, we're very thankful. Thank you for choosing her and we look forward to being here so her legacy will continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, at this time, I would like to acknowledge those who worked on this award with me, the committee members who worked on this award with me. Ms. Black, Ms. Mafus, Dr. Bryce Johnson, you came in, I saw you, there you go. Okay. These are the people who worked on this award with me for us to get to this point tonight. Thank you all so much. Are there any other SEAC members here tonight? None. Okay. Well, when, when we get to the donor part of this award presentation, I do want to know, I'm new to the process of trying to find somebody to sponsor us financially. So this first time around, the award financially was done by the Stevenson family and the Bethia family. So, thank you so much. And Dr. Cajiano?
Back to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bethia. This time, we'd like to congratulate and call forward Ms. Courtney Ferris. Ms. Courtney Ferris. Ms. Ferris is a special education teacher at Jones Middle School, here at Jones. And she was nominated by two teachers here at Jones, Ms. Eileen Hedberg and Susan Booth. And in their nomination letter, they shared a few words. They wrote the following, among a number of things. They said, quote, "We have had the privilege of working with Ms. Ferris in an authentic inclusion classroom and collaborative classroom setting for the past three years. Her enthusiasm, knowledge, and dedication to special education students is evident in planning, creation of materials, parent contact, delivery of instruction, and community volunteering." End of quote. Mrs. Ferris recently earned her National Board Teacher Certification in the area of exceptional needs, specialist at early childhood through young adulthood, mild to moderate disabilities. She has been with Hampton City Schools for three years and previously worked in Williamsburg, James City County. She earned her Bachelor of Science in interdisciplinary studies with a specialization in special education K-12 from Old Dominion University. Again, please join me in congratulating Ms. Ferris. This time, I'll go ahead and turn the microphone back over to Mr. Samuels as a few words and a presentation.
And there's a certificate, Courtney, and it says, "Althea Stevenson Award for Excellence in Special Education, presented the 6th day of June 2018, to Courtney Lynn Ferris. In recognition and appreciation for your passion, compassion, dedication, and extraordinary instruction to Hampton students with disabilities, all of which is helping to prepare them to live independent lives." And it has the signature of Ms. Bethia, our superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, and it also has my signature.
This is an engraved, Ms. Ferris, this is an engraved memento. It has the name, "The Althea Stevenson Award for Excellence in Special Education," your name, and the year. It's heavy in the bag. Now, with the Stevenson family standing, please, and the Bethia family, please stand. Thank you. This is also a part of the award, a check for $500. Thank you so much. We honor you. I'll take that and you can hold the check, you know? And let somebody take a picture of you, holding the check. There you go.
And Courtney, if you would like to recognize your family, and I know Jeremy is in the audience, so can you please recognize Jeremy, please?
Yes, I will recognize Jeremy. Baby mommy loves you. This is for you.
Mr. Humble, will the assistant administrators at Jones please stand to be recognized? Alrighty. It is our pleasure to next recognize one of our community partners for the VSBA Business Honor Roll. Would Ms. Ann Bain please come forward to assist with this recognition?
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Local business has the power to shape community attitudes about public schools. Every spring, the VSBA Business Honor Roll provides a way for local school divisions to recognize local business for their support, especially as schools face increasing budget uncertainty. The Business Honor Roll helps divisions say, "Thank you for the vital contributions." Businesses large and small, corporate-owned and family-run, play a key role in supporting our communities and local schools. They contribute to our school division in many ways, including helping schools with in-kind or financial contributions, donating to scholarship programs, as we've just seen, supporting extracurricular activities, offering internship opportunities, volunteering in our schools, and sponsoring field trips. This type of support is invaluable. This year, Hampton City Schools nominated the Spirit of Norfolk for this recognition. Would Simone Briann Evans from the Spirit of Norfolk, please come and join me on stage? And also, I'd like to invite Mr. Dale Rogers, Out of School Time Coordinator for Hampton City Schools. The Spirit of Norfolk has been a tremendous partner over the past several years. They embody the spirit of collaboration. Our students make yearly field trips on the Spirit of Norfolk. During a Spirit cruise, students receive a buffet meal, STEM-designed lessons led by NASA and the Virginia Air and Space Center staff, and recreation as well. In addition, just this past Saturday, the Spirit of Norfolk allowed Hampton City Schools' Out of School Time Department to host a professional development for the Stream Summer Program. It was the first of its kind for the Spirit of Norfolk. We truly value your partnership and willingness to help provide exceptional experience for our students and our staff. Mr. Samuels?
At this time, I would like to present the award and it says, "The Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll Program honoring Spirit of Norfolk. The Hampton City School Board expresses appreciation for your ongoing support of this community's public school. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goals of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them." So I would like to present to you with the certificate and say thank you so much on behalf of the Hampton School Board. And if you would like to see a...
Thank you so much. I'm so pleased to accept this award on the behalf of Spirit of Norfolk. Truly, the credit belongs to all the educators and admin who work day in and day out with the students. I know how hard you guys work. I've been doing this job for 13 years, working very closely with educators and admin staff. We appreciate what you do and it's all that we can do to support you guys. I'll be using this award as a reminder of what we do and coming in early, working late, and meeting student groups and all that stuff will help me remember why we do what we do. So thank you again and I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And once again, thank you to the Spirit of Norfolk for supporting our school division and public school. We're moving on with our recognitions. Next, we would like to recognize the winners of the 1619 High School Essay Contest.
Thank you. The City of Hampton 2019 Commemorative Commission invited our high school students to participate in an essay contest. The students were tasked to write an essay that described how the first Africans were instrumental in the early development and success of the Virginia colony, how their courage and resiliency enabled them to positively shape the course of Hampton's history and forever change our nation's history, and how Hampton can ensure the lessons of the value of enslaved people's lives are used to advance our civilization and the humanity of people from now on. A team of commission members reviewed the submissions and selected contest winners. Judges utilized a scoring rubric and considered historical accuracy, development of each of the three writing prompts, organization and logic, as well as the emphasis of the value of enslaved people's lives. Tonight, we welcome the 2019 Commemorative Commission, who have joined us in our audience and I don't need to invite because they have already joined me, the co-chairs, Dr. Kalida Fairfax and Lieutenant Colonel Claude Van, to present awards to the first, second, and third place winners.
Good evening. On behalf of the 2019 Commission, my name is Claude Van III and I have my lovely co-chair here, Dr. Kalida Fairfax. We are delighted to present some awards to some outstanding high school students who did a lot of research on the 1619 arrival. And we're here to recognize them for that. And before I get into who the winners are, I do want to thank our sponsors, the Historical Foundation, Aberdeen Gardens, and the president, Margaret Wilson, who's here this evening, the Aberdeen Gardens Historic and Civic Association, Terry Van, who is not here. And we want to thank Mr. Raymond Tripp down at Peninsula Town Center, who have all contributed gift cards to our winners. Our first place winner will get $100 worth of gift certificates, second prize, $75, and our third prize will get $50 worth of gift certificates. In addition to the gift certificates, our winners will get a certificate and a letter from Dr. Fairfax and myself, recognizing their accomplishments. And we are indeed proud that they have done all that one can expect in their research and referencing. And it took a little bit of time to do that and we certainly do appreciate that and want you to continue to learn more about our history. And as we come up on 2019, which is next year, we want the City of Hampton to get ready because we're going to have a lot of activities to recognize this monumental time in history. Dr. Fairfax?
We also like to recognize the commissioners who are here, Mrs. Billy Insulin, thank you so much, and Mrs. Ann Bain. We also like to thank all of the staff of the City of Hampton Schools for assisting with this project. This has been a year-long project and we do hope to continue it next year. Our first place winner is Catherine Dixon of Kickatan High School. Our second place winner is from Bethel High School, Raina Ward. Our third place winner is Peyton Grubb from Kickatan High School. I'd like to invite the superintendent, Dr. Smith, and Mr. Samuels for a photo op, please. Thank you so much. And thank you for supporting this effort as we educate our children about the arrival of African people at Point Comfort, not Jamestown, not Jamestown, Point Comfort, present-day Port Monroe. And there's a wonderful state marker out there, you should go out there and read that marker, that signifies the arrival of African people on a ship entitled The White Lion, who arrived here August 20th, 1619. I'd like to also mention, as we exit the stage, that the 2019 Commission is also sponsoring a pilot K-12 Teachers Institute next month. It's for teachers to learn more about the arrival story and how they can incorporate the historical narrative into their lesson plans and curriculum. Thank you so much, City of Hampton.
This is the third opportunity the commissioner has afforded our student this year. We would like to thank Dr. Fairfax, Lieutenant Colonel Claude Van, and the Commemorative Commission for their partnership with Hampton City Schools. At this time, we would like to ask for all of the parents, family members, administrators, and special guests in the audience to, who have supported these students or young people, to please stand and be recognized. Bethel High School, Kickatan High School. Next, we're going to recognize the winners of the 2017-2018 Technology Leadership Award. Mr. Paul Lawrence, would you please come forward to assist with the recognition?
Good evening. This prestigious award recognizes a school or department that is not only at the top of their game when it comes to the use of technology, but also exhibits the best teamwork, leadership, creativity, and innovative spirit to make big things happen with technology. You may recall that last year, our winner was Bethel High School, who was selected because of the incredible work they were doing in English, math, and their library departments. This year, we had two very strong nominations and we didn't feel we could pick... This year, we had two very strong nominations, and we didn't feel we could pick one over the other, so we're awarding them both this year. This year's Technology Leadership Award goes to both Cooper Elementary School and Jones First, let's talk about Cooper Elementary School, which is also our elementary magnet school focused on STEM, or Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. One example of how Cooper Elementary uses the support of technology is by offering tech classes for students in kindergarten through fifth grade. In these classes, students cover a variety of topics, from keyboarding, where students learn about proper typing with typing.org, and have friendly competition of the Typing Olympics to improve accuracy and speed, to coding, where teachers use software like B-bots, Probot, and Makey-Makys. Students at Cooper are definitely getting a head start on learning 21st century workplace skills. You may recall a kindergarten class that was able to share their learning about coding and algorithms on the HCS Digital Bridge in January, or how Ms. Courtney, a fourth-grade teacher, used the NASA spacecraft 3D app when learning about planets to create space rovers. Cooper's STEM program also contributes to a strong culture of collaboration. The technology-based projects place students in an environment where communication skills are developed as a part of the learning process. Cooper students are learning to become better teammates as they work together in a virtual arena. The staff at Cooper not only uses technology in their teaching, they also use it to communicate with families through programs like Class Dojo and Google Classroom. They even have their dismissal set up through Google Forms. We're proud to honor Cooper Elementary School for its commitment to giving its students a unique and engaging learning experience. I'd like to give special thanks to the following people and ask them if they could please join me on stage. Ms. Tracy Albia, principal; STEM lab teacher, Mrs. Kimble; the librarian, Ms. Barone; and if there are any other members of the Cooper staff here this evening, if they could join us on stage, that would be great. You guys totally earned it this year.
Good evening. I want to thank the committee for this award, and I also want to thank our wonderful teaching staff. Without their creativity and their collaboration, I don't know how we could do this. They are so innovative in what they do every day for our students, and our main goal at Cooper is to make sure that when they leave us and enter the world, that we have some students who are prepared for the 21st century. So, I want to publicly thank them for all their efforts. This is a wonderful staff to work with, and you guys watch out, we have some more things
Congratulations, Cooper. Next, let's talk about Jones Magnet Middle School. Jones Magnet Middle School infuses technology into every aspect of the school day and curriculum in a systems approach. At Jones, technology is not a novel approach, it is a standard. Students consistently use technology in every grade level and subject area. Students begin their day viewing the Wirecast School announcements broadcasted live and displayed on the classroom Promethean boards. Jones Magnet Middle School students in grades six through eight visit the Library Media Center on a weekly basis for skills instruction in reading, digital citizenship, resource website evaluation, technology integration, and also, they find all these skills in their language arts classes. In addition, students check out Mac and Via eBooks to read for pleasure. Students use additional digital resources such as EverFi and the World Book Online Encyclopedia. Additionally, all departments are able to utilize the Jones staff website to complete administrative tasks and locate information for the school. This includes accessing student activity logs, parent contacts, homework camp, meeting agendas, department lesson plans, calendars, forms, and a digital lesson plan archive. At Jones, STEAM Lab, that's Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics, is adjacent to the planetarium and is available for enhanced student project building. The planetarium itself has been upgraded through a grant last year, and the projector allows teachers to show full dome videos, which sounds very cool. The staff at Jones adapts to new and better technology, integrates technology into their classrooms, and supports the five Cs, which are critical thinking, creativity, communication, collaboration, and leadership, and character. So we'd like to give special thanks to these following people, and then invite everyone here from Jones up on stage. But recognized by name, Chelsea O'Hanlon from the English Department, Kristen Bender, the librarian, Maria McFadden, Social Studies, Melissa Hume, Social Studies, Beth Barnwell, Math, Sarah Klemmer, Math, Susan Booth, Science, Sherry Mayer, Science, Cheryl McLaughlin, Science, Tijuana Lambert, CTE, Mary Ann Goss, Tech Support Specialist, and Mr. Travis Humboldt, the Assistant Principal. If you could all join us on stage to be recognized.
All right, we very much appreciate this. We just want everyone to understand that this is truly a collaborative effort, as you can see. It takes the entire building to come together to embrace technology and to move forward with it, and as I said, this is a collaborative effort, and this is just a small representation of our building and all the dedication our teachers show to technology and pushing things forward. So, thank you very much.
All right, as we allow them to take their seat, once again, I'm back at the mic. So just bear with me, please. It is now our pleasure to recognize the Saludatorium for each of our four high schools. Dr. Wood, if you would please join me on the stage for the recognitions.
It is indeed a pleasure to present to you the class of 2018 Valedictorians and Saludatorians. We'll begin with the home of academic excellence, Bethel High School. The 2018 Saludorian is Alexandra Lockdenberg. Want to tell you a little bit about Alex. She has a cumulative grade point average of 4.54 with a composite ACT score of 33. While attending Bethel, Alex challenged herself with Advanced Placement and Dual Enrollment Courses. Additionally, she has engaged in scholarly scientific research at the Governor's School for Science and Technology. In addition to Alex's intellectual pursuits, she is an exemplary citizen, thoughtful, caring, and respectful. Her numerous awards, scholarships, and accolades do not only represent remarkable academic achievement, but also civic service and involvement in the community. Alex has devoted countless hours to academics and extracurricular activities. She's in the marching band, marching elites drill team, Model UN, Hampton City Youth Commission, Scholastic Bowl, Hampton Roads Youth Volunteer Corps, National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, and her love for music has resulted in her leading the Bethel High School marching band to a superior rating at the State Marching Assessment in 2017. She's received over 90,000 in scholarships and was accepted to American University, Georgetown University, Dartmouth College, Brown University, Columbia University, and Harvard University. She has chosen to attend Harvard University. Alex will major in government, and her career goal is to join the United States Foreign Service to support her nation as a diplomat. Hampton High School Saludorian is Melinda Nelson. I'll tell you a little bit about Melinda as she's coming forward. She's graduating with a grade point average of 4.60 and an SAT score of 1370. She's an international baccalaureate diploma candidate. She participates in Scholastic Bowl, Key Club, gymnastics, and is the president of the Spanish Club. She's also in the Spanish, Mathematics, and Art Honor Societies. Melinda is honored to be a Questbridge Scholar that awards a full university scholarship. In the fall, Melinda will be a member of a university community of curious thinkers, passionate dreamers, and energetic doers who believe that improving the world demands more than bold thought and brave action, is unconventional wisdom. Melinda plans to attend Rice University. Kickitaine Saludorian for the class of 2018 is Claire Nelson. Let me tell you a little bit about Claire. She has a grade point average of 4.64, an SAT score of 1550, and an impressive score of 34 on the ACT. Claire is a National Merit Commended Student. She served as flute and piccolo section leader and woodwind captain in the Kickitaine Warrior Band, of which she's been a member for five years. Claire is also president of Youth in Government and served as the Youth Governor's Chief of Staff at the 2018 Model General Assembly. Claire has been nominated and attended the YMCA Youth Conference on National Affairs for three consecutive years, serving as clerk in 2017. Along with her brother, she was a part of the first pair from the Peninsula since 2009 to argue an appeal before the Virginia Supreme Court as the model judiciary program in 2016. In 2017 and 18, she mated to the Virginia Supreme Court level of mock trial. Claire attends the Governor's School for Science and Technology, through which she mentors with the Director of Hampton University Museum and contributed to the museum's 150th anniversary exhibit, Pathways to Education. Claire has participated in the CNU Math Contest, and she's a member of the National, Triem, Roche Capa, French, Mu Alpha Theta, Science, and English Honor Societies. She has received numerous awards, including the College of William &amp; Mary Leadership Award, AP Scholar with Distinction, Superior Rating on the Flute for Solo and Ensemble, Student of the Year for French V, AP US History, AP English Language and Composition, AP Art History, Honors Biology, French III, AP Human Geography, and Most Outstanding Woodwind, Band Letter, Academic Letter, and Honor Roll. Claire is an active member of her church and enjoys spending time with friends, family, and her three dogs. Claire will be attending Yale University. She's studying archaeology. And the Saludorian from Phoebus High School is Angela Yarris. Angela was unable to be with us this evening, but she has a grade point average of 4.43 and a 1260 SAT, and she will be attending the College of William &amp; Mary in the fall. Congratulations.
Before you take your seats, will the parents of the Saludorian, family members, and administrative
Congratulations again to our Saludatorians, and now, it is time to recognize our Valedictorians for the class of 2018. And again, beginning with the home of academic excellence, Bethel High School, the Valedictorian is Rawwa Yadago. Rawwa is graduating with a cumulative grade point average of 4.61 and a 33 composite on the ACT. Rawwa has received several honors, including Early College Scholar, Academic Award, Academic Achievement Award, and the Advanced Placement Scholar Award. Rawwa has maintained outstanding grades in challenging courses of Advanced Placement, Dual Enrollment, and the Governor's School for Science and Technology. While exhibiting traits of great leadership, Rawwa's involvement in her school's extracurricular activities and in the community is impressive. She's a member of Bethel's marching band, Model UN, Scholastic Bowl, National Honor Society, and the National English Honor Society. She works not only to improve herself, but also her community, volunteering at the Riverside Regional Medical Center and the Children's Hospital of the Kilkings Daughters. Rawwa has been accepted to Johns Hopkins University, Northwestern University of Virginia, the College of William &amp; Mary, Virginia Tech, and Hampton University. She received over half a million dollars in scholarships and will attend Johns Hopkins University in the fall. She will double major in chemistry and public health. She believes Johns Hopkins will provide her with strong foundation to pursue her goal of becoming a medical doctor with a PhD in biomedical research. The Hampton Crabbers' Valedictorian for 2018 is E. E has a cumulative grade point average of 4.61 and a 1290 SAT score. He's an international baccalaureate diploma candidate. He's a member of the Spanish, Mathematics, Science, and National Honor Societies, as well as he's a member of the Spanish Club. E volunteers with Habitat for Humanity, the annual Pancake Jamboree, Sunday Suppers, and the Children's Fishing Clinic. E will attend the University of Virginia in the fall. And the class of 2018 Valedictorian for Kickitaine High School is Shannon Hep. Shannon is graduating with a cumulative grade point average of 4.66, 1500 SAT, and a 34 ACT score. Shannon is a National Merit Commended Student, and her eclectic interests include Girl Scouts and baking. She has earned... She has earned the extremely challenging Girl Scouts Gold Award, an accomplishment requiring over 80 hours of volunteer service that must include a lasting benefit to the community. Shannon's project was straw baling of organic garden to supply the vegetable and herbal needs for the Welcome Table, a weekly meal program for her neighborhood's homeless. Shannon has participated in just a few of, I'll name just a few of her activities. The 2013 Virginia STEAM Academy at Old Dominion University, the College of William &amp; Mary's Residential Class on C++ Computer Programming, Hampton University's 2014 Business of Engineering, Thomas Nelson Community College Grant-funded K-Nex, Imagineering and Creative Technology Advanced Manufacturing Program, University of Alabama's Residential Java Computer Coding Program, and Radford University's Environmental Science Summer Bridge Program. Shannon will attend the University of Virginia in the fall. And the Valuatorian for Phoebus High School is Noah Easter. Noah was unable to be with us, but let me tell you a little bit about Noah. He has a 4.44 grade point average and 1390 SAT score. He's a member of the robotics program, and in the fall, he will attend Old Dominion University, where he will be living in the Live and Learn Community for Engineering Students at Old Dominion University.
As Dr. Woods was reading, I neglected that I needed to follow her with my script. We just have such an impressive, I'm so impressed with our students. And to name the schools that you guys will be attending in the fall, it is also so impressive and the number of scholarships and so forth that you guys have received. I just don't phantom how you find the time in your schedule to do the many things that you do. And I remember having a conversation, and I'm just going to put her on the spot, Mary Bunton, and, you know, we were talking about how kids are to compartmentalize their time. And I know that you guys are so skillful and a master of compartmentalizing your time to do the extraordinary things that you do. And I just want to say congratulations. Will the parents of our Valuatorian and administrators please stand to be recognized, And before you step down, in addition to earning her high school diploma, Shannon has also earned her associate degree from Thomas Nelson Community College. And I had the privilege of attending that commencement ceremony and just to see her accept that, her diploma from Dr. Dever, it gave me such pride that since Dr. Smith has been our superintendent, we've seen an increase in our number of students receiving their associate's degree. I believe we have multiplied by approximately 400% Dr. Smith of number student receiving dual enrollment certificate. And Shannon is a recipient of those dual enrollment. And I just want to put a plug in. She earned her associate diploma at no cost to her or her family. No cost. So, we are doing a great job here, ensuring that our children are prepared for the 21st century. So Shannon, I want to present you with your.
So Chairman Samuels was stealing part of my thunder because it's easy to get excited about this young, this group of young people because they are very impressive. We are proud to present two seniors who demonstrated exceptional tenacity, perseverance, and grit to complete their associate degrees while complete, before they're graduating from high school. So first, we would like to congratulate Shannon Hepp. She's also Kickitaine's Valuatorian, and she did earn her Associate of Science in Computer Science last month from Thomas Nelson Community College. Shannon credits her high school dual enrollment and Governor's School concurrent enrollment courses with being able to earn her associate's degree prior to completing high school. Shannon was the recipient of the 2018 Thomas Nelson Community College President's Award for Excellent and Exceptional Academic Performance. Shannon will be an associate degree transfer student heading to University of Virginia to major in Chemical Engineering. Our next honoree is Parker Bunting. Parker also hails from the home where everyday greatness is the expectation, Kickitaine High School. Parker was relentless in the pursuit of the extraordinary achievement of earning his associate degree from Thomas Nelson Community College prior to graduating from high school. Parker is a bright, self-motivated, talented, and hard-working student leader, both inside and outside of the classroom. Parker has an impressive 4.43 grade point average, a Chief 1320 on the SAT, and 30 on the ACT. He also attends the Governor's School for Science and Technology and is a NASA Research mentee at Langley's Office of Chief Engineer. Parker is also an early college scholar, Advanced Placement Scholar, and he earned the prestigious Kickitaine Academic Letter. Parker was a 2017 Boy State Delegate and is a member of the Kickitaine Ecology Club. Parker is distinguished member of several honor societies, including the English, Mu Alpha Theta, Roche Capa, French Honor Society, and the National Honor Society. Parker is also dance captain of the award-winning Harbor Light Show Choir. Parker also sails with the Virginia Sailing Team throughout high school, and he lettered on the Kickitaine Swim Team. Parker will attend the College of William &amp; Mary in the fall, majoring in Neuroscience with a pre-med track.
Will the parents of Shannon and Parker please stand to be recognized? One thing I would like to say, congratulations to Parker and Shannon. This is a perfect example of one of the many reasons that students and parents choose Hampton and our top school, for our top school system. At this time, as I stated, for the parents to be stand, to stand and be recognized, and I did that earlier. So once again, thank you all so much for enrolling your students and your children in Hampton City Schools. It is now my pleasure to recognize our 2017-2018 School Board Student Representatives. The role of the representative is to speak on behalf of Hampton students on issues and policies that directly affect the student body. This is a non-voting role for the student, however, they do play an active role in board decisions. The students were selected from a pool of applicants who submitted application, applications to the school board and participated in formal interviews. First, I would like to begin, begin with the alternate Natalie Kidd. Natalie is a senior at Kickitaine High School, and she's a member of the Kiets, DECA Future Business Leader of America, Youth in Government Principal Advising and Consulting Team, and Blogging Club. She is a member of the National DECA Social Studies, English, Math, and American Cross, and American Red Cross Honor Societies. She has served as Kickitaine's chapter president and was elected to Virginia DECA District 25 President and the Virginia DECA State Office. She is a member of the varsity volleyball team, which Hampton lost to. So hopefully, next year Hampton will have the opportunity, well, you won't be on the team next year, alrighty, at her school. And she is a news anchor for the school notes for Hampton City School PEG TV. She volunteers her time for childhood cancer, Christian surfers, and relay for life. Natalie plans to attend George Mason University to study public administration. Natalie, I would like to personally thank you for the time you have committed to the school board. You have done a fantastic job, and I admire you so much, and I can't, and I look forward to following you as you matriculate on to college and hopefully one day become a senator or the Secretary of Education. So I'm excited for your future.
Mr. Chairman, if in order, I would ask that all of the members of the board would join you for an opportunity photo with Ms. Natalie.
Our student representative is Xavier Williams, a junior at Hampton High School. Xavier is the drum major in the Hampton High School Marching Band, is a member of the Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society, and is a news anchor for the school notes for Hampton City School TV. In addition, he serves on the Hampton, on the City of Hampton Youth Commission. He is, he is the Hampton Council PTA Student Representative and is a member of Calvary Community Church, where he served as a youth pastor. Where do you find the time to do all that, man? He's also a representative on the City of Hampton Neighborhood Commission. On behalf of the school board, we would like to say thank you Xavier for your enthusiasm and your commitment to Hampton, to the Hampton School Board this year, and we look forward to working with you next year as you were selected to serve on, my apologies, on the school board next year and share your expertise and experience with our fellow student reps. So will all the board members please join me in presenting Mr. Xavier his award? Well, the family members of Xavier and Natalie, please stand and be recognized, and the administrative staff at Hampton and Kickitaine High School, please stand and be recognized. My apologies. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes item 3.01, which is personal report number 18-11, item 2.02, minutes of the school board meeting of April the 18th, 2018, item 3.03, minutes of the school board meeting of May 2nd, 2018, item 3.04, minutes of the school board meeting of May 16, 2018, item 3.05, certification of the closed session of April 18, 2018, and item 3.06, certification of the closed session of May the 21st, 2018. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of tonight's consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve the consent agenda, which include item 3.01 through 3.06. Is there any discussion? Here and now, Ms. Bowers, please go for the vote.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. At this time, we, as we move along with the agenda, we move to item four, which is the Superintendent and Staff Reports. And at this time, I turn the meeting over to our Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. At this time, I would ask that Ms. Robin Ruth, our Executive Director for Human Resources, to come forward, and she will introduce our first presentation and report within the context of teacher development, our teacher development program.
Good evening. We are here this evening, last board meeting, we shared with you information around our recruiting and retention efforts, and we touched a little bit on our teacher leadership program and mentoring. And Ms. Richardson is here this evening with some more details, and we're going to spend a little bit of time reflecting on some successes of our wonderful teachers. I am first going to turn it over though to Ms. Heather Peterson.
Good evening. I'm honored to be here tonight to talk about the great teacher development plan that we have. We start off by revisiting our strategic plan, and when we think about our professional development plan, you have heard updates this year on climate and culture and the curriculum and instruction piece. So what we know is that when we put our professional development plan together is that we were systematic in aligning it with our strategic plan. So tonight, you are going to hear about our teacher development and updates that have been going on with that. When we think about recruiting exceptional staff and knowing how we want to retain that staff, we know that development is a key piece in this. Tonight, as we talk about teacher development, we also have up their safe and nurturing environment. We know that climate is the foundation to everything that we do when we talk about teaching and learning, and when we talk about how we develop our teachers, thinking about that safe and nurturing environment, we want to talk about that from the moment they step foot with us in our induction program, all the way through till they become those excellent teacher leaders, so that we create that foundation for teaching and learning. So what we're going to focus on again tonight is that teacher development piece, and there are three major areas that you're going to hear about tonight. First and foremost, our induction, the strategic plan that was put in place for how First and foremost, our induction, the strategic plan that was put in place for how we induct our teachers and provide them support. Our coach leadership program, how we support those adults that are working with young people and giving them that true coaching and job embedded development. And then the third piece that we're going to talk about tonight and honor some very special people is around our teacher leadership, which also includes our mentoring and supervising component. I'm going to turn it over to Kim who's going to give you some more details.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So our major professional development activities under our first initiative, which is our new teacher induction, which I shared before when I was in front of you, are our August orientation. We have six days of professional development plan for our incoming new hires. We start August 13th and spend six days with our staff to prepare them with the information that they will need before they get started with students in their room. We continue with our professional development days, which we call teacher conventions, and that is a gradual release of time in front of our teachers. So when they're brand new teachers, they spend three days throughout the year with us. As second year teachers, they have two days of professional development and they begin to embed some choice, personal choice. And as third year teachers, they will have one day of professional development, which is all choice. Our third initiative under our induction activities is our coaching circles. My fabulous teacher development coach, Jerry Lynn Workman, who you will see a little later today, facilitates an optional opportunity for teachers to have a safe space to share stories, but also have focused targeted development on growth mindset, classroom management, and professionalism. In our second area of coach leadership, coach leadership is targeted professional development that we provide to folks that are teachers, but they're at the division level. So our teachers specialists, our support specialists, our curriculum instruction technology teachers. So it is a very targeted, four-day intensive skill based on a serious set of communication skills and collaboration skills that we give as they go out and support teachers in the district. So we have the introduction to that, which we will actually hold the last week of June this year. The core coach leadership continues to provide ongoing skills and support with those that have already been through the introduction to coach leadership. And starting next year, we're excited to partner again with Title I to begin to provide some targeted support for those folks in the buildings. And our five-year comprehensive professional development plan moves right along. When I stood it before you two years ago, we were just starting in year one with our teachers that were hired in 16, 17, 15, 16. So our, our teacher, no, 16, 17. This year, our teachers were second year teachers that started with this plan. So they will go into year three. So when we finish the first three years of our induction professional development in the areas of curriculum instruction and assessment, instructional strategies and models, climate and culture, and classroom management, we turn those focus areas into leadership components, leadership, communication, collaboration, and professional learning. But we're not waiting until 2020 to begin this professional development. We began to provide this level of training as an optional opportunity for current and aspiring teacher leaders to participate in. So our teacher leadership activities are our summer introduction. We have a two scheduled for this summer in June and in August. And I'm very excited, and especially with Courtney Ferries being recognized today, we will be merging our National Board Certified Teacher Program with our teacher leadership because we want to make sure that those folks and the investments that we put into that group of people for their certification is aligned with our strategic plan and our goals. So I'm very excited about that. Our teacher leadership series is the optional two-year, ongoing sustained PD that the lovely folks behind me have participated in. We have our mentorship and supervision PD series and those folks target the support for our students that are in university programs, future teacher programs, as well as our novice teachers that come in. And I just mentioned our National Board Certification. So I just wanted to share a little bit of data for our new hires from the 17, 18 school year. We hired, at least with this data, approximately 229 teachers. And you can see that 120 of them were brand new, meaning coming to us fresh out of either a, another job or out of college. So it's almost 50/50 with the amount of new teachers that we had coming in. So when we had our conventions this year, we were meeting with those 120 brand new teachers. We target the conventions for those that are brand new with experience. We just concluded our new teacher mentor survey because our mentoring is the first level of support for our new teachers. And we asked them how they felt mentoring activities supported their knowledge and skills. And that is about 81% of the teachers feeling to a good or great extent that their knowledge and skills were enhanced as an, as a result of working with their mentor. And that's a wonderful thing. Because this survey was also given to not just brand new folks, but people might have come to us from next door or another state, what changes do they feel that they will make next year as a result of working with our mentor? We still do see some significant numbers from that good to great extent. So we're very confident this being our second year of having our mentors, if you remember, as teachers. Remember, we ended our retired teacher mentor program. So this is the second year that our teachers right in the classroom, right alongside our new hires, are the folks that are supporting them as we induct them to Hampton City Schools. Our teacher leadership program that I mentioned earlier is a two-year, over 50 hours of professional development opportunity for professional development. I'm going to bring Heather up for just a moment to speak about that.
I was going to let you keep going. So you can see there are four distinctive strands that we focus on with our teacher leaders, leadership, communication, collaboration, and professional learning. Again, when you look at the overlay of our strategic plan, these are four key areas that as we look at our teachers who are stepping into the role of leadership, that these are key skills that they need to focus on. One of the things that we know that's so vital is that when we think about leadership, a lot of times people think of that as moving out of the classroom. But what we know and research shows is having teachers who want to remain in the classroom but take on leadership roles are imperative to school success. When we think about those that are serving students in a capacity of teaching, being able to help lead the charge, if you will, or be disciples in the building of what the vision and mission and goals of the school are, is so imperative to have that teacher leadership focus. So as you look at those four areas, you can see the different areas of professional learning that the participants took place in. And when we talked about how we wanted to develop this, while Kim and I initially sat down and did some brainstorming, this is wrapped up in a lot of research, best practice research. And there are actually competencies and standards around this. So as we were developing the training and being very intentional around it, we took a look at these teacher leadership competencies. These folks behind us could recite all of these because in every single opportunity, we aligned these competencies. And as you take a look at some of those, communication, adult learning, if you're a teacher leader and you're collaborating with your peers, understanding how adults think and learn is equally as important as to how young people learn. So again, these are the competencies that we aligned. As well, there are teacher leader, teacher leader standards, and these are the seven domains for this. During that introduction session, participants become well versed in understanding those standards and those competencies, knowing the important role that they're taking on as teacher leaders. So Kim's going to share some demographics of our teacher leaders with you.
And what I just want to be very clear about is that this is a program that we have developed. We haven't bought anything. This is based on research and it's based around our goals as far as being Hampton City Schools teachers. So we have 34 teachers that began with us the summer of 2016. They had no idea what they were signing up for. But we wanted to share some data with you so that you would know exactly who this was. And I do want to preface this by saying that 34 gentlemen and women behind me are not the only teacher leaders in Hampton City Schools, but we are recognizing them because of their commitment over the two years to continue to be learners. So we have our education demographics here so that you can see that the majority of our teachers have obtained their master's degree. We also have, a majority of our teachers went through a traditional path, but we also have many of our teacher leaders that did not do a traditional path to education. What is wonderful to see is that the majority of our teacher leader graduates are in our Title I schools. And we know that there are different needs and different contextual circumstances in our Title I schools. And we want to be able to empower all of the folks there to be able to put their hands in and be a part of the work. So 58.8% of our participants behind us are in Title I schools. And we have a mix of our demographics as far as ethnicity representing our teacher base as well. And I'm really excited because, you know, our research says that you typically are starting to get the itch to do something a little different after your fifth year of teaching. And we do require that teachers are at least have three years of experience under their belt before they participate in our program, especially knowing that the new teachers will be rolling in. So we didn't want them to get started. But we have a rounded representation of experience as well. We recently had our last session and with Heather and I being the professional development facilitators for the project-based learning, we wanted to be examples of our own teaching. So our last session was a project-based learning activity for our students. You have a green folder in front of you. You have the opportunity to have a sample of the products that were created by the folks behind me. And the question, we know there's a driving question for professional development as far as project-based learning, they were charged with this. How do we, as teacher leaders, design a product that informs administrators, teachers, and division leaders of the importance of teacher leadership? They were asked to create two different products. One, to convince their colleagues that they should be a part of teacher leadership as well. And two, to inform their administrators about the importance of teacher leadership. And I'm so excited to see so many of their administrators here to support them. So everyone has a sample of the teacher products which are on the left pocket of your folder and the administrator products that are on the right. And on our website, we have many talented people in this group that created pow tunes and YouTube videos and they had the choice. And as you can see, it is an amazing products. Heather and I were just elated, we could not have anticipated what they would have created for you. So we're excited that you can have that in front of you to see what they did. They were charged to create, yes, create, but also to present. So they were supposed to find a colleague, it could have been a whole school, a team, their co-teacher to share the information with, as well as sharing with their administrators as well. And I believe they all did that assignment. Okay. And I just put a sampling up there. We had brochures and we had pamphlets and we had PowerPoint presentations and it's just been incredible. So I hope you have an opportunity to take a look at what they did. So what is next? I know that is a question that all of you are wondering. Well, the group behind me will actually need to complete an externship in the fall. They will work with their administrator in their building. And our theme was lead where you are. We don't want to jump someone from being a classroom teacher to now there's just one way that this is supposed to look. They're supposed to evaluate their setting and what it is that they want to do in their school from where they are, lead where they are, and create an opportunity for themselves that would align with what it is their administrator would like for them to do. So they're going to decide what that is this summer. I wanted them to get through with SOLs and finish, think about that, and we'll be supporting them along the way. And so that's what they will be doing. We will also be starting the instructional leadership track. I'm excited in talking with Dr. Cagiano and Ms. Ruth about the fact that we ask a lot of our instructional leaders in our schools. And again, a lot of them are selected because they are amazing teachers and they may not have been given the opportunity to gain their skills in leadership. So we are creating on August 1st an OPD for an instructional leadership PD track. And then I mentioned earlier, our National Board Certified Teachers will be getting involved with our teacher leadership professional development. I can't stop smiling. Okay. The externship I just explained. They will have the opportunity to transform their learning and to create new ways of acting and being in their new identity as teacher leaders. So with that said, we have some certificates that we would like to present. We felt it was important that you see them, but also that they see you and understand that this is a major feat. 50 hours of professional development did not mean 50 hours of FaceTime. A lot of that work was done independently. All of these people have responsibilities in the classroom and it is truly amazing what they have done. So we're very proud of them. So if you would just give us a moment to get ourselves together so that you can hear the names and see where all of these folks are coming. And at this time, if we could have all of the administrators, family members, for everyone that's here today to just stand, I know they had homework to do and you were like, who is Kim Richardson and Heather Peterson? Thank you so much. It's truly now going to be in the hands of the administrators, so we're very excited. And I want to thank you in advance. So Heather, are you reading?
All right, here we go. Ms. Ashley Ashcroft from Captain John Smith Elementary is a reading specialist and her leadership responsibilities revolve around that role. Marian Barnett from Hunter B. Andrews Pre-K 8. She is a 7th grade special education inclusion teacher focusing on math and language arts. Her leadership responsibilities are new teacher mentor, sped teacher leader, and lead teacher for the GPS program. Carol Birdsong from Barron Fundamental Elementary School is a 3rd grade teacher. She's a building mentor, a school leadership team member, and a curriculum writer. We have Tracy Born from Bethel High School. She's a teacher of AP English Language Drama and English 12, and she is the English Department IL. We have Ms. Sonya Butts from Hunter B. Andrews Pre-K 8. She is a special education inclusion teacher for all contents. Her leadership responsibilities include new teacher mentor and school leadership team member. Next, we have Deborah Clark from Hampton High School. Her title is Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Instructor. And her leadership responsibilities are that she is the assistant lead JROTC program. Next, we have Lorena Holmes Coats from Spratley Gifted Center. She is a 3rd grade teacher. Her responsibilities are school leadership team member and social studies instructional leader. Sherry Collins from Booker Elementary School is the reading specialist, and she is part of the leadership school team and responsible, and responsible for leading reading in the building. Wendy Christ from Langley Elementary School, 5th grade teacher. She's a school leadership team member, a math IL, grade chair for the grade level, and also a building mentor and coach. Next is Linda Davis from Kikatane High School. She is an English teacher and she is on the nine Atlantis Team Freshman Academy. Next is Becky Fraser Griffith from Jane H. Bryan Elementary. She is a 1st grade teacher. She is 1st grade team lead and she is also in the HCS ODU cohort. Next is Robyn Gottling from Cary Elementary. She is a wonderful kindergarten teacher and she serves on the school leadership team. Next is Carly Granga from Jefferson Davis Middle School. She is a 7th grade mathematics teacher, Course 2 honors and Algebra 1. She is the student council advisor and the RISE tutoring coordinator. We have Ernest Harden from Sims Middle School. He is a civics teacher. He is also the social studies IL. Kathleen Harrison, Hampton High School. She's a teacher for Earth Science IB Biology. She's an instructional lead for science and sponsor of the Science National Honor Society. Jennifer Holmes from Forest Elementary. She's a 1st grade teacher. She is the Ranger Report producer and sponsor, the talent show coordinator, and teacher technology leader. Elizabeth Horn, Information Literacy Department. She is a CITT and her leadership responsibilities revolve around her work as a CITT. Next is Merrill Innerfield from Jane H. Bryan. She is a 2nd grade teacher. She is the grade level chair, class dojo school mentor, and new teacher mentor. Jennifer Jones from Phoenix. She's a 2nd grade teacher and she is the grade level chair. Next, we have Megan King from Basset Elementary. She's a K5 literacy support specialist. She's a language arts vertical team member, a school leadership team member, and she is also part of the HCS ODU leadership cohort. Hillary Lane, Bethel High School. Hillary is a reading specialist. Her responsibilities are around English 11 and Read 180. She's the IL next year, remediation coordinator, work keys coordinator, and curriculum writer for English 10. Fallin Lee, Jefferson Davis Middle School. She's a 7th grade mathematics teacher and she is also the student council advisor. Tracy McKnight Boone from Cooper Elementary. She's an ECSE teacher and she has leadership responsibilities within her CLT and with lesson Mary Overby, also from Davis Middle School. She is a math resource Voyager teacher. She is a math resource Voyager teacher and she participates through the school leadership also. Alana Paulette is with Barron Elementary School. She is a reading specialist. She's the language arts instructional leader and she is a school leadership team member. Charlene Rawls, Machen Elementary. She is a reading interventionist and a member of the school leadership team. Andre Richardson from Lindsay Middle School. He is an English Language Arts teacher and a aspiring teacher leader. Twamika Rogers from Andrews Pre-K 8. She is a kindergarten teacher and proud member of the climate and culture team. Sherry Scott from Tyler Elementary School. She's a reading interventionist. She is a school climate team member and a 21st century reading teacher. Lindsay Taylor from Bethel High School. He teaches social studies and he is a building mentor. Rhea Wayne Wright, Spratley Gifted Center. She's a hearing specialist. She works with students, administration staff, and parents as it relates to students with hearing loss. Cicely Washington from Smith Elementary. She is a math interventionist, part of the school leadership team. She's a mentor and she's also the math IL. Charlotte Dean Woh-Mack from Andrews Pre-K 8. She is a pre-K early childhood special education teacher and she also is an aspiring teacher leader. And we have Jerry Lynn Workman, works for Human Resources. She's a teacher development coach and she supports professional learning across the division. Please give a round of applause to our graduating.
Their certificates read, achievement proudly presented on June 6th to our wonderful teacher leaders for completing the Hampton City Schools Teacher Leadership Professional Development Series with over 50 hours of learning in the areas of leadership, communication, collaboration, and professional learning. So it's not over, it's just getting started. Thank you.
And I know that we have so many family members who are present with us and there are cameras. So I would ask that the first row of our teacher leaders, if you would kindly stand so that members of your family would have an opportunity to take a photo at this particular time, just the first row and then we'll do the second row. If you'll just turn so that your family members can see you and they're here to support you and they can have an opportunity to take a picture.
We should have just had them come up on stage.
Let's give them a hand once again. Now, the second row of our teacher leaders, if you would turn and face members of, family members who are present so that they would have an opportunity.
Dr. Smith, since they're going to have to leave with their little ones and stuff in a minute, why don't we just let them all parade up here and be up here for this photo and then...
Come right on down.
Then they can process out. Unless they want to stay for the rest of the fun this evening. Come on. And I need, we need Ms. Richardson and Ms. Peterson in this picture too.
Dr. Smith, I think we need the pomp and circumstance as they come up.
One more hand for all these wonderful teacher leaders. Thank you.
Somebody. Channel, Channel 46, can you pull it out? They're all there for peeps.
We'll then move to the dual enrollment update.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Ah, sorry about that.
Ms. Richardson is not off the hook yet. They can escape, she can't.
Ms. Richardson.
Richardson.
Absolutely. Sorry, it's always a party where I go. Well, I know why you couldn't stop smiling. I preach all the time that staff development is the key to growth and change and all those things for any organization. And for too many years, our experience was that staff development was whatever the latest catchphrase was. And it's been wonderful for the last 10 years that we basically have decided to make staff development about our own priorities and our own strategic planning. And we're taking it to where it needs to be with teachers. And so I'm just very excited. I just have to say that as a teacher in Hampton City Schools for quite a few years, the thing that made me the happiest was to realize that people actually valued my opinion. And so to develop teacher leadership is such an empowering thing. And talk about teacher retention, teachers who are valued stay where they're valued. It's the most important gift we can give to ourselves as well as the teachers is to recognize their talents and to encourage those talents. And let me just say, as an administrator, if you want to accomplish anything in your building, you better do it through your teacher leadership. Because you will find, you can get up and make all the proposals you want, but till the teachers say, this is the train we're on, get on the train with me or get out of the way, and they will do that every time, then you don't get the change you want. So if you're an administrator and you haven't encouraged all the smiling faces in your building to get involved in this teacher leadership, you're missing a huge opportunity. But this is very, very exciting and thank you all so much for the presentation and for taking the time to, it's a lot to take 50 hours and that's the class time, that's not all the other things they do. Add 50 hours onto a teacher's plate for something else that somebody else is asking you to do, shows the commitment of all these folks. And their contribution is just going to keep being that ripple effect. Those are some nice pebbles you've thrown in the stream. So thank you very, very much. We're excited.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from board members before Ms. Richardson is excused? All right. Thank you so much, Kim. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At this time, we will now have the dual enrollment update to provide it to the school board. And I know that Dr. Woods will be introducing this particular presentation. Dr. Woods?
Good evening, Chairman Samuels, Vice Chair Jerry, school board members, and of course, the Hampton community. As you know, we are creating a college-going culture here in Hampton City Schools. So this evening, it's my pleasure to present this Jennifer Oliver, who will begin the presentation to update you on dual enrollment in Hampton City Schools. It's Genevieve Elazier who will actually start.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Genevieve.
Thank you for allowing us the platform to share some updates on the work that we have been doing this past year. These things are always a setup for me, aren't they? All right. All these degrees, this technology is just not my friend. All right. So tonight, what we want to do is go over a little bit of the design for dual enrollment. We want to talk about some of the growth and the trends. We do definitely want to discuss ACE, which is the academy strand that we have developed in line with the academies of Hampton, which will allow the students to obtain a associate's degree through dual enrollment work. We're going to share with you a little bit in terms of the continued partnership with Thomas Nelson and our national accreditation efforts there. And then, you know, share out what we believe will be the future of dual enrollment here in the district.
I'm just going to pull the mic closer to you.
Pull the mic closer. I was told once to use my mama voice for things, so maybe I need to step into that lane a little bit. Okay, so what is dual credit? Just kind of refreshing a little bit, dusting it off a little bit in terms of the opportunities for students in terms of obtaining college credit. We do offer a variety of avenues for students. So you can do it through standardized scores, which would be AP, excuse me, and IB. So you take the course and then you take an associated test and you score accordingly for the college that you're looking to go to, and that will determine whether or not college credit is granted. And then we have the governor's school and then in-school dual enrollment, where you are concurrently enrolled in a college where there's an agreement and you're earning high school credit as well as the college credit. Sorry, clickers. Okay. So our opportunities here, particularly as it relates to dual enrollment in school, in our in-school program, is the option here for the students to concurrently earn college credit while earning their high school credits. So if we have a student that is sitting in an English class that is dual-enrolled, they are earning their credit for graduation, but they are also earning at the end of the year six college credits as well. So we are concurrently enrolling them, which again is a little different from say IP, excuse me, IB or AP, where they have to take the test. In this case, as long as they're earning a C or higher, they are earning the college credit in addition as well as the high school credits required for graduation. So our design here is obviously, the first priority is to align with the strategic goals here for Hampton City Schools in terms of maximizing the students' learning. We are taking the opportunity here for college-level courses to be offered through Hampton City Schools through our partnership with Thomas Nelson, and we're offering this at all four high schools. The juniors and seniors that qualify, they have to be approved, they go through a process. And through the courses that have been approved through Thomas Nelson, they simultaneously again earn not only their high school credits, but the college credits for the courses that they have elected to take. And we are really excited that the dual enrollment program also offers some opportunities for our staff. So the teachers, our Hampton City Schools staff members, who have been approved by Thomas Nelson to teach their courses. So they are approved adjunct faculty. They go through a very intense credentialing process. Their courses go through a very intense credentialing process for them to be able to teach these courses. And the staff members here have the opportunity to participate in professional development at Thomas Nelson. They're invited to the colloquiums and so forth to, you know, garner some relationships and resources and so forth, so that enriches not only Thomas Nelson's community, obviously, but our community here at Hampton City Schools. So eligibility, at this point in time, due to the stipulations for Thomas Nelson, the students have to be juniors or seniors. Its parents obviously have to agree to uphold the standards of the program in alignment with their students. And they have to meet the admissions criteria. So we do have some stipulations based on Hampton City Schools requirements, but we also have to adhere to the admissions requirements as stipulated by Thomas Nelson since they are the ones granting the credits. That criteria, as established by Thomas Nelson, has a few components to it. We can have the students qualify for dual enrollment through the Virginia Placement Test, which is your first column there. If they take the placement test, they have to score in an appropriate range according to the Virginia Community College System, Testing System. We can use PSAT scores, we can use SAT or ACT scores, and in certain cases, we can use SOL scores. So some of the work that the students are already doing here in school, Thomas Nelson allows us to use that work to potentially exempt them from having to test based on the courses that they're interested in. So when we first started the in-school work in 2016, 2017, these were the courses that we were offering. We have the English, the algebra, and the pre-calculus courses, which were offered at all four high schools. And then based on teacher credentialing, we also were able to offer a couple of science courses, a history course, and a marketing course. This school year, we were able to grow a little bit more. So we have two English courses now. So we have a 100 level for the juniors, we have a 200 level for the seniors. So the students could ostensibly take care of their first year and second year college requirements in terms of English. We have two math offerings, so we have a statistics and algebra combination, and we have the pre-calculus 1 and 2. And those again are offered at all four high schools. We grew a little more, we've got biology and chemistry, we added in earth science, the geology, the oceanography course was there, so we added the geology course. History continues on and marketing continues on as well. So we've seen some growth in terms of the courses that we've been able to offer, which is very exciting for us. Next year, still looking to grow incrementally, just a little bit at a time here, the math courses continue. However, you will notice that there is a difference in terms of the course numbers, and that is a shift based on Thomas Nelson and their realignment of some of their courses based on their own work and accreditation processes. So we're still offering the courses, they're just revamped a little bit based on Thomas Nelson's shift there. We're looking to add two law-based courses, which will be in alignment with the academy over at Bethel. And then we have three courses that will be offered in the hopes of solidifying and strengthening our cybersecurity program. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Oliver to talk data and statistics in terms of student growth.
Good evening. We are excited to share with you that we are growing. Dual enrollment is growing across the district. And earlier, as we were watching our students receive awards based on their essay writing, our valedictorian and our salutatorian, Genevieve and I were giving each other the wink because many of those students are also dual-enrolled students. And so we're very proud of the work that our students have done. And we're especially grateful for the support that you all have provided us and for the encouragement that Dr. Woods has provided us. So what I'd like to share with you is that since 2016, we have actually seen a 500% increase in our dual enrollment numbers. Across the board at all four high schools, you can see significant increases of students enrolled in dual enrollment. So you can see our latest numbers for 2017, 2018. We've made some significant jumps just in the past two years, which is incredible.
It is incredible.
So in two years, we have six times as many students participating in dual enrollment. You can just see from our numbers, in 2016, we had 61. Now, across the district, we have 367. Why that is really exciting for us is that it is, you know, as we are making our students' college and career life ready, when you translate that, translate that to a slide as this one, we have increased that college and career readiness by six times. So we are sending our young people out into the workforce and out into college, ready and prepared for whatever their next step in their life is. That's fantastic. So this slide gives an overview about our dual enrollment credits earned by site. Again, you can see the increase over the past couple of years. Again, you can see the increase over the past couple of years. We definitely have seen, based on course offerings, some interest from certain schools. But one thing I do want to point out is that when you look at the Hampton campus, you see that number decreasing. That number is decreasing because those students are now taking those course offerings within the high school. And they're doing that because of the fact that the parents are not incurring any costs associated with tuition. So you may see that number decline over the years, and our other numbers will definitely be increasing as we move forward. Okay, so in terms of course enrollment, and these are actual credits earned, we have a 600% increase over the past two years. So what that means is that our students are not only opting to take one dual enrollment credit, they are opting to take, or one dual enrollment course, they are opting to take multiple dual enrollment courses. Across all four high schools, what Genevieve and I are noticing is a trend that the 11th graders are anxious, are increasingly taking at least two to three dual enrollment courses. Then they're completing additional courses their senior year. So just this year alone, we have awarded our students 3,714 credit hours. And that is transferable. It's fantastic. This is just a chart of the credits awarded by site. So as Genevieve has pointed out, you know, we are in-school dual enrollment, so Genevieve and I handle the four high schools, and so that makes up about three-quarters of the students that are earning the dual enrollment credits. But then we also still have governor's school and New Horizons that are providing dual enrollment credits for our students as well. Alrighty, so these are the grand totals, and I will go ahead and so that you can see all of this. Since 2016, we have served 706 students, and that's an unduplicated count. So again, when you're looking at credits earned, our students are taking multiple dual enrollment courses. They're really maximizing this opportunity for themselves and their families. We have awarded almost 7,000 credits that they can transfer to their prospective universities in Virginia. Excitingly, it's exciting to share as well. Genevieve and I coordinate the college representative visits at our high schools, and so every year, we have more and more universities from out of state that are also accepting our dual enrollment credits. Most recently, we had the University of Alabama come to recruit from Hampton High School. She was there specifically to speak with our dual enrollment students, as well as our IB students. And I also had an opportunity to meet with a blue and gold officer from the United States Naval Academy. And while they are not fully transferring our dual enrollment credits, they're now going to allow our students to take tests if they are dual enrollment, which would then, it would then give them the choice of maybe testing out of one course, but then test, but then allowing to take another course to progress through their sequence more efficiently. So again, this dual enrollment work is actually shaping how the universities are recruiting our students. And this is an incredible number. We, with your support, Dr. Smith's encouragement and vision, and obviously the work of Dr. Woods, Hampton City Schools has saved our students almost a million dollars in Thomas Nelson tuition. And if you have a student in a private university in Virginia such as I, that number is actually tripled if you were to look at private university tuition. It's pretty incredible. So we will continue to grow that number as our numbers continue to grow in the classroom. So as we are moving forward with dual enrollment, and we have some students that were among us this evening that have showed us how the work of dual enrollment can really pay off by providing them with an associate's degree, we have begun the work of the Advanced College Experience, ACE, which is part of the Academies of Hampton transformation. I believe several years ago, Genevieve and I presented before you when we were just getting ACE up and running. So this year is really exciting, this coming year, that we will have our cohorts at Phoebus High School. And quite simply, what this program does is it allows our students to enter into Hampton City Schools as ninth graders and begin a rigorous accelerated course of study that will put them on the path to guarantee that they actually receive an associate of science or an associate of social science from Thomas Nelson. It is a four-year commitment, and as Parker and Shannon will tell you, it does require specific courses to make sure that you can obtain that associate degree. It also requires that students pass AP exams. But as you will see in another slide, we have a lot of resources and support to be able to help our cohorts of students so that they can successfully commence those degrees. The students will begin in the ninth and 10th grade, so they will be able to take AP honors and then just general Hampton City Schools courses. And again, by the time they're in 11th and 12th grade, as mandated by Thomas Nelson, is when they can actually begin their dual enrollment and concurrent enrollment courses. So I've shared with you our good news. Genevieve has given an overview, but what we would really like to do is have our parents and our students and our teachers in dual enrollment share their perspective of dual enrollment. So I would first like to introduce Ms. Coates. She is a parent of a Phoebus High School student.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been a fan of the dual enrollment since the moment I heard that it was a possibility. I strongly, along with my husband, encouraged our daughter to participate, and wonderfully, she was on board right away, so that wasn't a hard sell at all. I would say it has been fabulous. It's going to save us at least a semester. I'm very happy about that. That's one less semester I'll have to work at Target. What's really important for the student is that they need to be ready and prepared for that experience. There's a maturity level that they will need. They have to have, they have to have the intrinsic motivation to do this. We can't push them to do it. It doesn't work out well for students or parents when we try to push our kids to do things that we want them to do that they have no interest in doing. And I'm happy to say that Morgan has been very interested in this, and she's been very engaged. It has taught her how to build a relationship with a college professor versus her high school teachers. She's been successful at both of those, and it's a very different relationship. It has also shown her the expectations that is coming in a couple of months now. There are higher expectations. The rigor is definitely increased. Her dual enrollment instructors have helped her and guided her and set the bar for that college level. So as she goes to college this fall, she's a little bit ahead of the game because she already knows what's coming. And it's nice not to be blindsided. Time management. When we first started high school with her, we were part of a program in which one of the members said that most students fail college not because of academics, but because they fail to have time management. And this has been wonderful for her as well, to learn how to manage her time with the rigor of the assignments and the increased expectations. And that has been unimaginably beneficial. And it helps her too with the transition, of transitioning from high school. High school, there is a tendency in some facets for us to treat, and I'm kind of speaking as a teacher and a parent, for us on the one level to treat the kids like they're grown, but they're not, but also to kind of coddle them in, my phrase is to ride her. Do you have this? Did you do it? Where is it? And I get, "Mom, I've taken care of it. It's taken care of." And it allows the parent to kind of take a step back because the teachers are not talking to you. They're going to talk to your student, which is what they need, because when you go to college, parents cannot address the college professors. They don't want to hear from you, and they don't have to. And it teaches the students accountability and responsibility, which is very important also. I have, I went to school when I was 17, so my parents were very involved that first year. Morgan will be eight, well, is 18, and it's been a unique experience because, of course, in society, once your child turns 18, they're an adult, and parents are like, "Okay, well, you know, that's great, you're the parent, but we're not talking to you anymore." And so her having that ability to have that maturity level, to have this experience and to know what's coming has been fantastic. I would encourage every student to participate in this program. It's been eye-opening for our family. It's been very beneficial for her, and I think it's part of why she's been accepted. Every school she applied to, she was accepted, and she chose to go to UVA. And I think that's one of the reasons, because of the dual enrollment program. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Coates. I would now like to introduce John Henderson, one of our current and graduating dual enrollment students from Kegaton High School.
Good evening. My name is John Henderson. I go to Kegaton High School. I've received over, I think, 26 credit hours, and I received the Presidential Initiative Scholarship at Virginia Tech, and I think part of the reason was the rigorous courses that I've taken throughout my high school career. And it covered up almost all my expenses except for $2,000 in loans, but through dual enrollment, I am going to college with all my costs paid for completely, so I don't have to worry about loans or anything. I have nothing to worry about, so that's so amazing. Because I thought, I came from a family that we have struggled very financially, but through this, there's no worries anymore. And I'm going to be a first-generation student, and I'm finally going to graduate from college and, you know, bring honor to my family, and I'm really happy for that.
That's amazing. And so I would also like to introduce Parker Bunton, who is also one of our graduates for dual enrollment.
I'd like to thank the school board for providing us the opportunity of dual enrollment. I think it's great. I've excelled in it, and it's grown me a lot as a student and as a person. And I also like to thank the teachers there who are along the way, especially my dual enrollment teachers. The curriculum that they provided to me was very rigorous. It was very challenging, and it helped someone like me who's searching for very rigorous academic experience to flourish and also kind of take a step back and be a little bit humbled by some of the rigorous courses that I took. And they were definitely challenging, and they've all opened my eyes up to a lot more opportunities I can take from college. Having the amount of credits I have, I have about 52 or 57 credits, and that could allow me to transfer as a junior, which would have been great, but I decided to go to William and Mary for a four-year experience, and that gives me so much versatility in that experience. I could go for a double major. I could go for a major and a minor. Gives me so much flexibility in my course selection, and it's truly, honestly, an honor and a great experience to go through these dual enrollment classes. And I'd like to emphasize their importance and how special they are. I've talked to many of my underclassmen about how important it is to take these classes and how great they are compared to AP classes, because AP classes can be fun, but the dual enrollment classes really dig into the material a lot more, and they really help you learn more as a student as well, not just learning about the material. So yeah, thank you.
And I would just like to say, John and Parker, we are so proud of your efforts, and we are so glad that you took this journey with us. We know that being first-year dual enrollment students, it was a little, you know, you weren't sure how this was going to work out, but we wish you all the best in your future, and please keep us updated on how everything works out for you. I'd also like to introduce Melissa Still. She is one of our dual enrollment English instructors at Hampton High School. Melissa has been with us since the start, and she has been a tremendous help just in terms of collaborating with Thomas Nelson's faculty. She's attended all of the professional development that Thomas Nelson is offering our dual enrollment teachers. And I can tell you that Melissa, or we call her Professor Still, is one of the reasons why our students choose to take dual enrollment. So she teaches both Dual Enrollment English 11 and Dual Enrollment English 12, and so they always ask, "Is Ms. Still teaching the class?" And we can say yes, and so we are thrilled to have her again for another successful year.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the time to speak to you tonight. One moment, Ms. Coates. Thank you for trusting us with this program, with your daughter. And gentlemen, good job. Good job. Oh, my goodness. So I feel so trivial now with some of the things I'm going to say, but they're not trivial at all. My name is Melissa Ann Still, formerly Wes. I'm a proud member of the English Department at Hampton High School. I have 14 years of teaching experience, not only with Hampton City Schools, also with Thomas Nelson, Tidewater Community College, ECPI University, Liberty University, and Old Dominion University as both an associate professor and an adjunct faculty member. I'm currently the dual enrollment teacher at Hampton High School, and I'd like to take a moment tonight to actually talk about my students, because I made them a promise two years ago as 10th graders, and they trusted me, and it's now part of that promise that I let you know just exactly what they have done. First of all, my students come from very diverse backgrounds. Because of the IB program at Hampton High School, there are certain students that simply do not enter my classroom. IB program has them, and the IB program is perfectly allowed to keep them. I enjoy what I have as students because they are unique and they bring their diversity to that classroom. I do have children of current Hampton City School employees. I do have children of current CEOs and different members from the community. I have over 50% of my students who will be first-time college students for their family, and when they graduate, they will be the first college graduate in their family. I have at least two dual enrollment students who will be the first high school graduate in their family, and I teach approximately 60 Hampton High students in the dual enrollment program. Almost 90% of my students are on free and reduced lunch, which should give you an idea about socioeconomic standing. I know of at least two families where the parents are currently sleeping on couches, couch surfing, working two, three, four jobs, earning their own GEDs, some that are attempting to earn college diplomas even as their children are in high school earning dual enrollment credits because they want their children on a better path. We're helping those parents by putting their children on a better path much earlier than they were able to accomplish it. There's two names I want to bring up in the senior class. First name, if you have not heard of his name before, is Tajir Lewis. He's a graduating senior at Hampton High this year. Tajir trusted me in 10th grade when I told him, "You need to go find Ms. Oliver. You need to take this crazy test that she's telling you to take. I promise you it will benefit you in the future." And so he listened to me, and he did. Tajir is not only an excellent student, he is an amazing member of this community. I would love to have 1,000 more like him. He's part of our dual enrollment program since junior year. He has 12 credit hours in dual enrollment English, eight credit hours in dual enrollment biology, three credit hours in dual enrollment MASH, six in dual enrollment history, and six in dual enrollment math from a previous year. He's attending Virginia Tech in the fall with 35 credits earned, a full ride, and will be paid a monthly stipend because of the excess scholarships that he has earned. Our dual enrollment program gave him the opportunity not just to earn the credits and knock an entire year off of his education, but to also fight for the scholarship money that he knew he deserved and that he has rightfully earned. The second name to remember is Jerome Woody, also a graduating senior at Hampton High. The second name to remember is Jerome Woody, also a graduating senior at Hampton High. Good friends with Tajir. He never wanted to be outdone, so when Tajir did it, he went right behind him and did it as well. He has earned twelve credit hours in dual enrollment English, three credit hours in dual enrollment math, six credit hours in dual enrollment history. He was offered a full ride to Hampton University as an early admission in January and he turned it down because they did not have the program he wanted to see a successful path in his future. Instead, he is going to Old Dominion on a full ride scholarship. And Lord willing, if everything goes out with these last few scholarships, he also will be making in excess in scholarships that will allow him to have a stipend to monthly live on. He has twenty-one credit hours in place and those dual enrollment credits are what has allowed him to fight for scholarship opportunities. This program has long-lasting effects outside of just the Hampton population as I have already enrolled five different second-language students into the dual enrollment program and they are successfully passing dual enrollment English because this is what they want to do. This is the path they want to be on and this is the choice that they want to make now as eleventh graders in order to be successful. They are challenging an English course that ninety-five percent of their cohort will not challenge and they're doing it with English as a second language. And they are doing it successfully. In addition to that, those five students are also attempting biology and history and doing those successfully as well. So it is not just the Hampton community, but any of those coming into the Hampton community we are also affecting. My senior class as a whole is a testament to what we're doing. During the pre-college application with Hampton High, we had over fifty applications from just my sixteen seniors. All sixteen were accepted into a four-year university. All sixteen will be going. Over fifty percent of them have most of their college tuition paid for through scholarships and grants, not loans. And over, and five of them that I know of have full rides out of sixteen students. The writing skills they learned in eleventh grade came back in twelfth grade and in twelfth grade, we showed them what to do with them as they were attempting a two-hundred-level British Lit class, a sophomore-level class as high school seniors. They have strengthened their portfolios through community service. They have learned how to seek out academic scholarships and they have learned how to navigate a bureaucratic system that none of them understand and that many of them do not have family members to help them with as they are the first ones who are going there. We are allowing not just our brightest, but our most dedicated and our hardest-working students to earn college credits while in high school. We're saving each family between three and four thousand dollars today and those students have earned over half a million in scholarships for tomorrow. That's a half a million more that we're saving. We're doing this to no, at no cost to our families as long as our students are going to put in the work and they are doing that. All I ask is that you continue to support this program when we go forward. When our science courses come and they start asking for money for costly supplies because they need to perform these experiments, because that is what is expected of us as Thomas Nelson instructors, we need to find a way to finance it. When we make petitions to offer stipends and incentives to get dual enrollment instructors into Hampton High School and into the rest of Hampton City Schools, we need to do it. We need to find a way to make this a community effort by underwriting grants, by petitioning community organizations to support us, and by requesting scholarships for any and all students who are actively trying to find a way down this path, some on their own. We need to make this not just a four-year high school experience, we need to make sure that it is an eight-year experience that carries them beyond Hampton City Schools and well into their future. I have been a resident of Hampton since nineteen eighty-nine. I didn't graduate in nineteen eighty-nine. I did graduate out of Hampton City Schools and in high school, I had to fight for my own college education. I had to fight for financing for my own degree and I had to fight to better myself. I'm a product of a system that graduated me at fifteen years old because they had no idea what else to do with me. So it was easier to graduate me and send me to Thomas Nelson than it was to hire a teacher to come into my building and to teach me at the advanced level that I was at. I fought for it, but I always have questioned, how many other classmates never fought for it because they never knew it existed? We're offering that to our students now and they now know it exists and they want that. We're giving this opportunity to them because we have support from our community partnerships and we need to maintain them. And while it might be cheaper for us to never offer this opportunity at all, we are saving our community thousands upon thousands of dollars and that will come back to us. My students will be coming back one day and they're coming back for our jobs. They're coming back for your jobs and I want them to. I want them to. I have been proud to teach them, many of them since tenth grade. I will proudly continue to teach them because I know that they want to come back, because I know just like I did all those years ago, they want to come back and they want to change this community. And when they do, they are coming back more educated, more enlightened, and more willing to change the community around us. Those students are doing it, everything that we have asked them to. And I need you to remember that when the cost of this program seems too high and I need you to remember that when it seems like we are fighting too hard. They are doing everything that we have asked for them to do and now we need to do everything that we need to do in order to continue to provide that opportunity for them. I thank you. I thank you for supporting this now and I thank you for continuing to support this and support the students here at Hampton City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Still, for your powerful words and your experience. Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and try to follow up. I've got, my voice is a little shaky. I think she hit some soft spots. Okay, so let's just finish off, just talking a little bit about the student success for our dual enrollment. Clearly, early outreach and identification is gonna be crucial just in terms of making sure our students are prepared. As Ms. Coates said, we want to make sure our students and our parents are fully aware of what these offerings are and how to be successful, not just to enter the program, but how to be successful to complete this program. We also want to make sure that we are continuously, on a daily basis, providing positive student support through the academy model. So this amazing transformation that Hampton City Schools is undergoing is going to only make this program and our students more successful for their futures. And lastly, a key piece of dual enrollment is going to be the support that we have from Thomas Nelson faculty and staff. And actually, we have a Thomas Nelson, I'm totally calling you out on this, but we have a Thomas Nelson faculty member that is here. She also has a student that's over at Hampton High School. And she, she, well, she and her colleagues are very supportive of this continual, continuous development to make sure that our students are seeing the wonderful opportunities, but more importantly, to make sure that our adjunct faculty that are in the classrooms, working with our students day in and day out, feel supported and realize that they are part of something much bigger than just the classrooms that they're working in on a daily basis. So as, oop, sorry, as we are continuing to grow this program, we have joined partnership with, as members of the National Alliance of Concurrent Enrollment and Partnerships, NASEP. We are right now assisting Thomas Nelson with a full accreditation to make sure that not only is Hampton City Schools a member of NASEP, but that Thomas Nelson is fully accredited as well. And that accreditation process is gonna strengthen the planning and the community, the communication among partners. What it's also going to allow us to do is work with partners and school districts from across the nation to make sure that we are continuously building a better and better program for our families. So, our next steps. We are working very hard to recruit adjunct certified teachers. We realize that that's definitely a challenge. As we stated earlier, there's a very rigorous process that they need to go through in order to obtain that type of certification to teach. So we are looking and working with human resources to maximize our recruitment efforts. Again, making sure that we're supporting our teachers through professional development and any additional graduate coursework that they may need to become adjunct faculty. And then, again, aligning dual enrollment with the, with the overall academies of Hampton, making sure that we're engaging our business partners and our community members and that we're continuing to expand our course offerings. What I would like to share with you for a moment is that we, we made a very quick video that was presented to the Hampton City Council about two weeks ago. So we would like to show you that clip. Hampton City Schools is committed to ensuring that all of our students are college, career, and life-ready upon graduation. Dual enrollment allows our students the opportunity to take college-level courses while still at the comfort of their own designated home schools. While the students are taking those college courses, they're taught by our Hampton City Schools teachers that also are adjunct professors. So that's excellent for the students to have some familiarity with their, with their teachers as well. The students get to still participate in prom, extracurricular activities. So while they're pursuing this rigorous course of study, they're in a very familiar environment that serves them well. One last benefit for our families is the fact that we're saving them thousands of dollars for dual enrollment. So that's a wonderful opportunity for all of our students and families.
I think the biggest reason for my family and later became my biggest reason was to save money. Because getting degrees at your community college can be a third of the cost or even less than that and they can still transfer to your, you know, your college of choice.
I think the beauty of the in-school dual enrollment is that they can mix and match, right? So if you're comfortable taking AP in this area and you wanna take honors in this area, but you can also take dual enrollment here. So they can kind of arrange a schedule that really is very comfortable for them and still press themselves. So that's definitely something that I think is wonderful about the in-school dual enrollment piece.
It was pretty hard. I mean, a lot of the classes are very challenging. I had to work hard on my AP classes to get the AP credits and the AP exams. I also had to work hard in all my dual enrollment classes. They all challenged me. Also helped me realize what I can do. I can definitely do a lot more than I expected of myself and I've grown a lot more in confidence and in experience.
I think going into it, I really set the bar high for what I was expecting, but it turned out that most of my dual-enrolled classes were able to be taken here at Keketan or over at Governor's School. So a good chunk of the credits actually, I got done while I was taking my high school credit classes. I only had to take, I'd say, less than ten classes at Thomas Nelson. And I either took those in the evenings after school or I took them over the summer or I took them online during the school year.
Right now, we have the highest number of students enrolled in in-school dual enrollment in the peninsula. So we've beat out Newport News and Williamsburg and so that's, that's really exciting for us that we're, we're growing, we're growing the program and the students are really benefiting and our district is becoming stronger as a result of our work.
I highly recommend the dual enrollment process to other students. I think that if you can save yourself two years of college and you can save yourselves literally tens of thousands of dollars by getting your two-year degree to community college, by all means, go for it. Because you can transfer it to a four-year college.
I would definitely recommend dual enrollment classes for all students. I think they're great for just learning in general and also challenging students. I think all students should probably try to go for the associate's degree if they can, try and make the most out of their high school career, but if they can't, do the most they can, whether that's AP or dual enrollment.
That concludes the presentation.
I see Ms. Henry's getting so excited.
Well, first of all, this is so exciting, but I have to stop by, start by thanking Dr. Smith and Dr. Woods because to say that this started three years ago has grown that much in three years. It grew from nothing in three years. It, there wasn't, it wasn't that there was a little bit and we grew it and we grew it. When Dr. Smith and Dr. Woods started working on this, there was virtually no dual enrollment except on paper in Hampton or accepted as students' own initiative to go and work out some details. So it's very exciting that, that the leadership has had the imagination and the facility to go ahead and recruit these brilliant people to be flexible and to be creative and to enroll our students. It's very exciting to see students like Shannon and Parker who are, you know, expected to do this. We expect them to do. You know, we expected them to be AP students. But, you know, it's also exciting to hear Ms. Still say, I have students that nobody expected to do this. And, you know, there are many, many students who have average ability. Guess what? The world is run by people with average ability all day long, every day. And they get up and they go to work and they run our lives for us. And we need to make sure that nobody feels that this program isn't for them. Sometimes students feel that AP programs aren't for them. That's for some other student, that's not really for me. I'm not that kind of a student. Well, I'm, I'm a person who wants a future for myself and I can understand if you tell me, this is an opportunity that will help you get whatever kind of future you want and it will make it possible for you to do things that your parents want you to do and were afraid they couldn't provide for you. So I think it's, it's really good, if you look at that chart, the thing, only thing you have to get through is that placement test. We'll help you get through the placement test. And then you just have to work like the dickens. I went to a prestigious university and I had gone to a prep school and my, my prep school teacher, headmistress said, you know, the only difference after, after kids get to college, the advantage that those students like I had from having a very rigorous high school, that, that advantage is gone in a year because all the kids who just struggled to get there have learned how to struggle and they know how to do it. So if we give average students the opportunity when they're in high school to figure out, I can compete with, I can compete with Parker and Shannon because I can just work a little harder. And maybe I don't need to do what they're doing, I'm just gonna need to do what I wanna do. And we've got to do everything we can to have this continue to grow. And it's wonderful to have the academy at FIBUS and of course, that's dear to my heart, but it's also wonderful to know that we have teachers in every high school and that we're going to do everything we can to facilitate teachers getting that extra piece. I was explaining to Dr. Smith, I have a master's in the teaching of social studies. I took minimal education courses and all the rest in graduate history courses at UVA. It wouldn't have taken very many more courses and I, of course, had them later at William &amp; Mary in graduate school to, to get the credential to teach a dual enrollment history class. We need to help our teachers figure that out and we need to tell them that we're gonna do everything we can to help them. I'm so excited and thank you, Ms. Still, for your remarks. They are right on, on point because this is not just a program for our brightest and best students, although it's an advantage to them. Just think, if I'm gonna go be a doctor and I've knocked off two years out of that nine years it's gonna take me to get through school, come on, that's wonderful. Then it, then it makes it possible. But it also makes so many things possible for every, every, every student. You don't have to have sixty credits when you get through if you have fifteen and you know you can do college and you can head for Thomas Nelson on your own when you graduate. It's a great opportunity. So thank you for your, your inspiration, Dr. Woods and Dr. Smith, and thank you, all of you who have made this program so successful. We're just delighted. Thank you.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The night is well spent, so I won't be too long. I do wanna compliment you on the great opportunities that we are offering our students and here in Hampton. I think this is a wonderful day for academics, for our young people. One of the questions that I have for you is, how is the information being communicated? One of the questions that I have for you is, how is the information being communicated to let the parents and students know that this kind of program is available? And how are we going about vigorously searching for teachers that would fit the mold that we're looking for, for the adjunct professors that can teach also in the high school?
This year, we held parent nights in each of our high schools. We had Rising 9 and Rising 10. So we had outreach to parents so that they could learn more about dual enrollment, and certainly more about our advanced college experience, the ACE Academy, and parents. We had brochures developed so that we could pass those out for parents. Additionally, Genevieve and Jennifer both meet individually with parents, because I think that's been the success. It's when you sit down with me and my child, and map out, and talk about the support for my child. And I think that's been the real crux of how we've been able to grow it. It's that individual time with our amazing counselor. So it's not just our school counselors, because they inform, but also to have the support of our college and career counselors. That, I think, is what really helps our parents. Secondly, in terms of growing our staff, we recruit heavily through HR. We are also providing support through offering teachers money, financial support, to take some courses. So it's an area that we have to continue to grow. The standards are high from Thomas Nelson Community College, and it's actually from, there is a credentialing process for all colleges and universities that Thomas Nelson has to adhere to. However, we encourage our teachers to go back and get those courses. We have teachers who have volunteered to do that, and we'll financially support them. Thomas Nelson Foundation provided us with a grant to assist us in doing that. So we have wonderful partnership with Thomas Nelson Community College. I can't stress that enough. They are totally in support of Hampton City Schools and the dual enrollment work that we're doing.
Dr. Woods, I would say this, that I have ran into some parents who I have discussed this program with them, that were not aware that we offer this in Hampton. And so I would suggest that we come up with a more vigorous way of getting that information out to parents that do not know about the great opportunities that Hampton is offering when it comes down to the dual enrollment program.
We certainly will continue to do that. We actually have a dual enrollment tactic team, and that's something that tactic team works on. You know, how many ways? And you have to use multiple ways.
Yes.
This is one way. You know, tonight is one way. Because there are quite a few parents who watch board meetings, and people in our community who will talk about it. Did you know about this opportunity? And so it's important that you continue to market the program in every way that you can. Our young people are also ambassadors, you know, to encourage others, as you heard Parker in the video talk about. I encourage. So that word of mouth, "Did you know?" You know, why don't you try it? So we're going to continue to do the outreach. It takes multiple ways, everybody working together to help market something that's wonderful to people.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Doctor Woods, and Ms. Oliver, and Ms. Genevieve, I just wanted to say thank you. I'm not a dual enrollment student. I'm actually in the international baccalaureate program. And had I not been in the IB program, I do love it, though, I will say that. I do love the IB program, but had I not been in that program, I would be a DE student. I do want to talk about Ms. Still for a moment. And Ms. Still, I'm not your student, but I do go to the same school as you. And I heard you, I was in the hallway this morning, and you were actually talking to a group of your seniors in there. And I don't want to seem nosy or anything, but I did bark in on the conversation. And she was talking to the group of seniors, and she told them, she said, "I talked to the administration," and she said that "you all are the most devoted students. This cohort, this graduating class of 2018, are the most devoted seniors here in Hampton High School." And I know the same thing goes for all the other schools, do not get me wrong. But Ms. Still has a contagious teaching spirit and environment in her classroom. And I even am, I'm very good friends with Jerome. And I even asked him, I said, "How did you get a full ride to HU, and you turned it down?" He said, "This just wasn't for me." But to say that, you know, he got a full ride from HU, and then at the same time to have the turnaround, and have a full ride from Old Dominion at the same token, that just goes to the legacy of your teaching. And Ms. Still, at Hampton High School, Principal Hardy says it all the time, "A student's success is a teacher's legacy." And so I wanted to say, on behalf of those students that you have, thank you so much for everything that you do to continue the work of making sure that Hampton City Schools not only puts our students through graduation, but graduation in college. Because that's what's happening. These students are getting, you know, when we talk about doors closing for students, you are the person that has that key that opens any door that they want. And you open that door for them, and show them the opportunities that are behind it. So thank you so much to Parker, and, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. I got to go back. I don't want to mess it up.
John.
John, congratulations on your success story. A lot of people will say that, you know, you all were the guinea pigs of the program, but I don't call it a guinea pig. I call it the beginning of a good success story here in Hampton City Schools. And you, seeing you in the video, Parker, it really showed to your, the personal encounter you had with dual enrollment. It wasn't a class, it wasn't a course that you took, but you took it more of, "This is something that's going to get me further than just graduation. This is going to give me that experience that I want in college." And also to Dr. Woods and Dr. Smith, I just want to say thank you to opening this door to those students that aren't in the IB program, in the Governor's School program, in the AP world, but to those students that just want to make sure that they're doing good things. And so to see this presentation, to have the testimonials, I really wish you would have brought Jerome, Ms. Still, but, because I know he could tell that story pretty well. But this is amazing to see. And as a person that is in IB that now wishes, he probably went down that DE route, don't tell Mr. Neely.
He won't.
I'm glad to see the great things are coming out. And might I say, y'all have some beautiful cords. Y'all really do. Those purplish, they're green, right? Purple and green?
Purple.
Green and purple. Oh, some beautiful cords. I won't have it, but it's okay. So, thank you so much. And I'm glad to see where this is, joining the Academies of Hampton at FIBUS High School, and to see the other success stories that come out of it. So thank you so much, Ms. Still, Ms. Oliver. Congratulations to you, John, and Parker. And thank you again, Dr. Woods and Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Williams. And next, Ms. Mugler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things, just really, again, want to compliment Dr. Smith and Dr. Woods for the incredible work that you've done to move this forward. We've talked about dual enrollment in this division for a long time. And Mrs. Henry, as a board member and as a colleague, I can tell you, was insistent that we do this as a division for our young people. And when we were working to launch the academies, was one of those things that we used to hook Ms. Henry into the whole academy concept. And so it's blossomed out of, you know, a lot of things, but really excited to see that we have, you know, two associate's degree students this year, graduates this year. And I think, you know, to your point, Dr. Woodhouse, that the word will travel now that we've reached this point where students have come and completed like Parker. And so I am excited to see that, you know, that we've reached this point, and the numbers are just incredible. I think, you know, you cannot argue with numbers. That comes from someone who works in a bank, and numbers are very important. But really, you know, I'm just going to go ahead and say, you know, it's almost a million dollars that we've saved families. So that's impressive, and it's really a testament to such incredible, great, hard work on the part of so many people. Ms. Oliver, and Genevieve, you've got this long last name. I wrote it down, actually. Elazier, Elai, Elazier, well, wow. I should have just said Harris. But such incredible work on your part to make sure that this really cements. And of course, we can't neglect Thomas Nelson and their partnership with us, and really how far we've come with that great partnership. Dr. Dever has been very supportive of Hampton City Schools, as has been mentioned tonight. But, you know, when we brought Dr. Smith on, he'd done a little dabbling in this dual enrollment arena. So we thought we might have a good fit there, when we were lucky enough to snag him here in Hampton. But I congratulate the students, and congratulate those of you who've been working on the program and the progress that we've made with it, and look forward to just where this is going to go for our young people. Thank you so much. It was a great report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to agree with everybody who talks about the outstanding numbers. They're off the chart. They are unbelievable. But I was sitting here, and I was having a flashback, Dr. Woods, to 1997, right? When we first started using the word dual enrollment. And as Ms. Henry said, it was just kind of on paper. And I remember, for quite a while, it was pretty much on life support. And then entered Dr. Jeffrey Smith, and board members who were looking at courageous and outstanding ways to move this division forward, before I came on this board. And voila, the infant now is going to college. And I think it's exciting for many ways. But I think the slide that was up there that spoke about the dual enrollment student success, it pointed to outreach and identification of students, that's marketing. And I just wanted to say to you and your team, that's outstanding marketing to show the numbers that we just saw up there. When it talked about positive student support, you didn't just put the student in those programs. You know, you had great teachers, you had great administrators, and just like Parker was saying, you had students telling other students about it. And then that last part, I cannot, I cannot give more credence to the fact that we have an outstanding collaboration relationship between Hampton City Schools and Thomas Nelson Community College, because they didn't have to do it. And we remember for a long time, as we tried to cultivate that. But now everybody's on board, and the fruits of our success, and the fruits of our labor, sitting right behind you and beyond. So I just think, Dr. Woods, with all the work that you and your team have done, you all need to give yourself kudos for making sure that we got the numbers that we did. So I just want to applaud you guys.
Ms. Mugler has...
I'm sorry, I just had one other little tiny thing I wanted to say about the students that we had present tonight, because they're both outstanding young men, John Henderson and Parker Bunning. And I notice this whenever I am visiting across the division, and when I'm visiting the Governor's Schools, and looking in AP classes, and all those kinds of places. These two gentlemen were show choir folks. So I'm just saying, show choir rocks. There you go.
Show choir rocks.
I have a remark that I would like to share.
But, Dr. Woods, before you take your seat, I just want to also commend you for your efforts and your team's effort. Jennifer and Genevieve, and you guys, as Ms. Mugler says, you guys rock, man. And I'm just so excited in the direction that this school division is heading. And when I think about dual enrollment, a particular word comes to mind, and it is leveraging equity. Leveraging equity. There is no need for any excuse for any of our students who are entering our schools that they can't be successful. Leveraging, leveraging equity. Another word that comes to mind is tax base. We are setting ourselves apart from the other school division, and this is another opportunity, Ms. Cherry, to highlight and sell Hampton. So families and students will choose Hampton because of the opportunities that we're offering our students. And I know Ms. Bunton is in the audience, and I tell you, this will drive equity within our school division, and will also attract families, which will increase our tax base. So Dr. Smith, and Dr. Woods, Genevieve, and Jennifer, and Carla, and the rest of the team, thank you so much for putting all this effort. And as Ms. Cherry said, the baby is now birthing, and is now off to college. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. We'll conclude the superintendent and staff reports with financial report. Ms. Vizel Townsend will come forward and provide members of the board with an update.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Vizel.
I'm here this evening to present the April financial statements, as well as a summary of the final budget bill for FY '19, FY '20. Our revenues and expenditures for the month of April was $165,651,738. $165,379,515 for expenditures. Our revenues were a bit higher than they were last year, and our expenditures are right on target. Our average daily membership for the budget was $19,250. The spring student record collection, we submitted 19,013 students, was 237 fewer than what we budgeted for. This decrease in enrollment will result in a revenue loss of $1.8 million. We also have projected potential revenue shortfalls in our Medicaid, our indirect costs, and our federal impact date. And while we have shortfalls, the division will mitigate these revenue shortfalls before the end of the fiscal year. We've also submitted categorical transfers to and from category nine for the month of April for your review. And if you have any questions at this time, I'll be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions or remarks from board members for Ms. Townsend? All right, Ms. Townsend, thank you so much for the report.
Okay. I also wanted to give you a report on the summary of the final budget bill for FY '19, FY '20. I'm just going to give you highlights from the bill at this time. The FY '20 budget includes a 3% raise for SOQ-funded instructional and support positions as of July 1, 2019. This is opposite of what was originally proposed as 2% as of December of 2019. The final budget also does not include a no-loss funding for school divisions with over 10,000 students. The per-pupil funding for the supplemental lottery increased from $274 per pupil to $336 per pupil for FY '19, and $342 for FY '20. This will largely offset the loss that we have in the no-loss funding. School divisions have 100% flexibility in their spending of these funds, and there's no local match required. The per-pupil funding for the Virginia Preschool Initiative, our VPI, increases from $6,125 to $6,326. Our at-risk add-on supplement increases from 13% to 14%. We're unsure as of yet as what the impact will be to Hampton City Schools. And in summary, we estimate we may have a nominal revenue loss, similar to the original house budget of $100,000. We have identified resources to cover this loss. And at this point in time, we still have not received the Department of Education or templates, so we don't know the specifics of each category. But we will provide it... of each category, but we will provide it in the, in the future as we receive it. Any questions?
Are there any questions or remarks for Ms. Townsend? All right, Ms. Townsend, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For your in-depth report.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that concludes superintendent and staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. At this time, we will move along with the agenda. Item five, which is hearing of any delegation or presentation of any written communications or petition. I have five petitions. Ms. Bowers, would you be so kind to read the protocol, please?
Yes, Ms. Reeves is going to read it for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual students as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you so much, Ms. Reeves. Our first speaker is Robert Lincoln. Good evening.
I feel a little out of place after hearing all this academic achievement, and I'm going to talk about sports, physical performance, and money. Tonight, I want to address the cost of some of the athletic programs in the Hampton schools. As you know, we use our schools to train students' minds and to some extent, we train their bodies for their physical well-being. We train their bodies with games or sports such as football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey. There are, these are well-established sports, but they come with some problems such as injuries and substantial cost of equipment. These games also limit the skills that each player utilizes when playing. Today, I want to introduce you to a new game that will, if added to the school's athletic programs, will benefit more of the children and will cause the schools and children almost nothing to play. This sport is designed to eliminate serious injuries, reduce minor injuries, and eliminate the high cost of expensive equipment. The sport is called pole ball. That's spelled P-O-L-E-B-A-L-L. The sport utilizes each child's ability to run, throw, catch, kick, and work together with others on a team. A detailed description of the game can be found on the website Poleball World. That's Poleball World, W-R-O-R-L-D, dot com. I'll leave a copy of the rules for the game for the board's use. It is important for the school board to save money and to some, and to still provide many benefits for the students. So to save money, I want to tell you about the lower cost and greater benefits associated with pole ball compared to other scores, compared to other sports. Recently, on April 18, 2018, an article appeared on page one of sports section of Virginia Pilot. The article said that there were 1,000 young lacrosse players from the South Hampton Roads High Schools who are trying to get the game of lacrosse recognized as a varsity sport in the high schools. One thing such recognition would probably do is get the schools to absorb the costs associated with the sport. This was the article that appeared, the whole front page of sports section. So, I want to compare for you the costs associated for 1,000 players to play pole ball compared to the cost of 1,000 players to play lacrosse. I prepared a cost comparison which I will leave for, for the board. It shows that to play lacrosse safely, you need about $552 worth of equipment for each player. This does not include the cost of shoes as we will assume that players will buy their own shoes. Now, the cost now to play pole ball, there is no equipment needed. All that is needed is the cost of a number three or four soccer ball, which costs $8 at Walmart. So to play lacrosse for 1,000 players, it would cost 1,000 times 552 or $552,000. And to play pole ball, the cost would be $8,000 for each player to have their own ball. A similar cost comparison can be made for football, hockey, or any other sport. So I'm asking the board to consider the benefits of the game for the children and athletic programs of all the schools of Hampton. Then, the board can recommend that the game be introduced to the students through the physical education classes and the intramural programs. Consider, two balls for a school would cost $16. So for $16, a school can have two teams at the school playing pole ball in some fashion. In conclusion, the school system can save money by substituting pole ball for some other sport in a sports program that is more expensive to play, or it can just add pole ball to the extra, as an extra new sport that will enable more students to play. A team sport and almost no cost. So for $16, you can have 44 students at a time playing pole ball at a school. And also, you can play, in the book, it talks about playing it on the big field, but you can also play it on the basketball court, and I have modified rules for playing it in small areas and also for younger students, youngsters. Thank you for your consideration.
And Mr. Lincoln, you can give that information to the school board attorney. Our next speaker is Amy Pearson.
Good evening, Chairman Sainz, Dr. Smith, and esteemed members of the board. My name is Amy Pearson. I am a resident of Hampton, a graduate of Kickitane High School, the parent of a twice-exceptional fifth-grade student at Spratley Gifted Center, a member of the Local Advisory Committee on Gifted Education, and the PTSA president at Spratley. My daughter has been at SGC for three years now, and I'm so very grateful that this center exists and that she has the opportunity to attend a school whose staff is able to both celebrate and understand her giftedness. As a giftedness is often misunderstood, I would like to talk tonight about gifted education and associated myths. As I imagine, it is difficult for you to keep up with all areas of education and because I know how much you care about all students in Hampton City Schools. There are many different ideas about what giftedness entails. The federal government defines gifted students as students, children, or youth who give evidence of high academic capability in areas such as intellectual, creative, artistic, or leadership capacity, or in specific academic fields, and who need services and activities not normally provided by the school in order to fully develop those capabilities. The federal government, however, does not define how these students should be found or taught. That is left up to state and localities to decide. In chapter 40 of the Virginia Regulations Governing Educational Services for Gifted Students, gifted students means those students in public elementary, middle, and secondary schools, beginning with kindergarten through 12th grade, who demonstrate high levels of accomplishment when compared to others of the same age, experience, or environment. Their aptitude and potential for accomplishment are so outstanding that they require special programs to meet their educational needs. These students will be identified by professionally qualified persons through the use of multiple criteria. In the interest of brevity, I have not elaborated on the above, but I have included the information in the packet I provided. Testing performed and identification guidelines for giftedness is also left up to localities. The U.S. Department of Education Office of Civil Rights estimated that in 2011, 2012, there were approximately 3.2 million students participating in gifted and talented public school programs, or about 6% of public school students. Many people don't understand what it means to be a gifted learner. When I say my daughter attends a gifted school, I very often get comments about how I must think my daughter is better than other kids and that it must be easy to be the parent of a gifted child. Gifted students don't just perform well on tests. They learn in a different way, and they have their own unique challenges. Here are some myths about giftedness that are commonly encountered. The first one is that all children are gifted. While all children have their unique strengths and talents, not all are educationally gifted. As defined earlier, gifted in a school setting means student performs at a higher level than his or her peers. Children who are educationally gifted need guidance and challenges to help them reach their potential. When not challenged, gifted students become bored, frustrated, and may demonstrate behavioral problems as a result. Many gifted students have personality traits that set them apart from their same-age peers, including increased intensity, sensitivity, asynchronous development, and perfectionism. Also, many gifted students struggle in areas that other students do not, including social skills, difficulty working collaboratively, poor organization, poor work-study skills, and a fear of failure that may lead them to not even try. The second one is gifted education programs are elitist. Gifted programs are meant to identify and assist all gifted learners. Gifted learners come from all cultures, ethnic backgrounds, and socio-economic groups at pretty similar rates. But there's no federal funding and limited state funding, if any at all. With these, with this, gifted programs are dependent on local funds. Thankfully, here in Hampton, gifted education has been made a priority, and for that, I am grateful. The final one is a student cannot be gifted if they have poor grades or a disability. Gifted students are not gifted in all areas, so they may have a lower grade in an area that is not where their gifts lay. Also, when not challenged, boredom and frustration set in and low performance may be the result. Twice-exceptional students, those who are both a gifted learner but have a disability that may mask their giftedness, frequently fall through the cracks and never get the services they need. This was the case with my daughter. I can personally report how difficult it is to get assessments done on your student when they're not failing, a process I went through when we were living in Baltimore. The difference in her, once her IEP was implemented and implemented well by Hampton City Schools, was phenomenal, and as a result, I will be forever grateful to Hampton City Schools. In my research, I found a quote that I thought was apt. "Gifted does not connote good or better. It is a term that allows students to be identified for services that meet their unique learning needs." Thank you for providing our gifted students with an environment that allows them to thrive.
Our next speaker is Tennyson Garrett.
My name is Tennyson Garrett. I live at 35 Kennelworth Drive in Hampton. I have students at Bethel and Phoenix. I come to you tonight to talk to you. Just to give you some thoughts, I've heard a lot tonight. It's funny how God works things out. A lot of what I heard is right along the lines of where my thoughts were. We got beautiful things going on in Hampton. The students are doing great things, but our motto starts with every child, and that's where I'm concerned, every child. I think some of the things we have in place are setting our standards too low for our kids. I mean, a child who's, Ms. Coates said it, I don't know her, but I heard her say her name, and she, she hit on one of my points, is that, you know, a student who's mature and in high school can take a path that is beneficial to them. But some of our kids are not mature at that level, especially ninth-grade high schoolers. They're not mature enough to make the adult decisions they need to make. But we as the administration, we as the teachers, we as the parents have to guide them in that way. And it becomes a struggle as a parent when the standards of the school are lower than my expectations, because, you know, the argument is, well, it's good enough for them. Well, they don't, you know, the child doesn't understand the benefit I'm trying to afford them. These kids who took the dual enrollment, those, those are awesome advantages, but so many of our young kids won't realize the advantage of it until the time has passed. I was blessed in my childhood. Most of my mistakes I made before I was an adult were childish mistakes. Most of my mistakes I made as an adult were adult mistakes, and I paid the penalty for that. But in this day and time, the childish mistakes that our kids can make can have repercussions to them in their, and they'll pay the penalty as children of adults. One of the things that relates to that is, you know, Hampton City Schools implemented this program with the HRT free bus pass. Sounds great. Sounds, sounds like it could even impact some of what I heard tonight, the dual enrollment. Students need to get to different classes. They could get on a bus and get there. But we've implemented a program that is, is given to all students, no matter what their maturity level is. I don't even understand why Hampton, HRT, they let, they want the kids on there. I'll tell you what my philosophy is. They want the kids on there from 13 to 17-year-old, so they get used to riding a bus. So when they get 18 as adults, they'll continue to ride the bus, and HRT will make money. Well, I don't think us allowing students to freely get bus passes to go anywhere they want, from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., be disobedient to their parents, make all these adult choices, be in environments where adults are. I mean, we make, we're doing too many things in Hampton. I go to the football games, it's chaos. Why are we even letting the kids come without their parents, 14-year-olds? And, and we're doing all the things to address the symptoms, but we're setting our standards so low. One of the things on athletics, you know, I was reading, reading about that, and we, a student can participate in athletics if he keeps a 2.0 GPA. Well, you, you got written in there that the parent will be notified via the report card. Well, it's too late then. You know, it's too late by the report card time. Halftime, the season's over. So the students got what they want, they played, the coach got what they want, they got a victory. But the student has to live with the bad grade, and that's impactful to him later. Why can't we use the technology? Real-time grades. Students GPA falls below 2.0, don't even worry about going to practice today. What's wrong with rules? We have a dress code, no sagging. Oh, we don't enforce it. We give up. We say, you know, I'd be telling them every, every minute, well, that's fine. I've talked to Dr. Woods in situations where I've been in the schools and seen a kid walking with his pants below his butt cheeks, and I almost said something to him, but it wasn't my place. If we have a dress code, we need to enforce it. We need to put the rules on the wall. I know you're going to have a parent that comes up there that's going to say, I don't believe in that rule, but if that's our rule, we got to stick by it. So I probably had to talk to you another night because I know my time is running out. But, and I didn't even get to some of the points, but that was the main thing, the Hampton Bus Pass, I just don't agree with that. I think we should allow our students to get that opportunity when needed to address a need. All right, thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Trina Garrett.
And other guests. I'm happy to be here today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. You know, we heard a lot today about the students, about Hampton City Schools and accolades and acknowledgements over our educators, and I, that gives me hope. I just wanted to ask a question or two about accountability for learning in the school system, particularly... Particularly, what methods do we use to determine if students are receiving the best education they can, other than the SOLs? And also, after the SOLs are done, what is the intent for education? I mean, does it continue till school is out, or once we're done with SOLs, then that's it? I ask this question because I'm really concerned, you know, school is pretty much over with, right? I mean, the textbooks are gone, the Chromebooks are gone. I'm just concerned about, you know, are we receiving, are our children receiving the best education if they can? That's all.
Unfortunately, Ms. Garrett, we can't engage in a back-and-for dialogue based on what our protocol says, but I would, the superintendent will follow up with you regarding those questions, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item is Item 6, which is deliberation, which includes Item 1 point.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I thought you said we had five speakers.
Kathryn Wilson? We missed her. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Wilson, I do apologize, it got slipped. Okay, Ms. Kathryn Wilson.
Yes.
My apologies. Got slid somewhere in there.
Good evening, Chairman Samuels, Dr. Smith, and esteemed members of the board. My name is Kathryn Wilson. I am a resident of Hampton and have three children currently attending Spratly Gifted Center, all of whom left private school for the opportunities afforded by a dedicated gifted program. I'd like to talk to you today about best practices in gifted education. But first, why do gifted children matter? The study of mathematically precocious youth, a 45-year study tracking the outcomes of gifted children, showed that of children who test in the top 1% at age 13, about 25% have doctorates by the age of 33, compared to about 2% of the general population. Jonathan Y., psychologist at Duke University's Talent Identification Program, which you are probably familiar with, has said, "The kids who test in the top 1% tend to become our eminent scientists and academics, our Fortune 500 CEOs and federal judges, senators and billionaires." David Lubinski, professor of psychology at Vanderbilt University and co-author of a study looking at the educational and professional accomplishments of gifted children, says, "Our economy depends upon the creative sector, science, technology, the arts, medicine, law, and entertainment." Our research finds that differences in creative potential among highly gifted youth can be identified at age 13, offering opportunities for educators and policymakers to develop programs to cultivate these individuals based on their unique strengths and abilities. Camilla Binbo, a member of the National Science Board and vice-chair of the National Mathematics Advisory Panel, says of this study, "The policy question becomes, how best can we support individuals such as these, especially during their formative years, to help promote their development and success? Gifted education programs are intended to offer these children educations which are tailored to meet the unique needs of gifted children, so that they reach their fullest potential." The National Association of Gifted Children notes that gifted children need gifted education programs that will challenge them in regular classroom settings, and enrichment and accelerated programs to enable them to make continuous progress in school. The best practices for gifted education, which they recommend, include the following: Number 1, acceleration allows gifted children to learn at their own speed faster than in a typical classroom. Gifted children clustered together in a classroom have the unique advantage of being able to move through the material at an accelerated rate with their peers. Studies consistently show that gifted children whose classes are accelerated thrive both academically and psychologically. They receive higher standardized test scores and are more likely to earn graduate degrees than non-accelerated peers, at no cost to self-esteem or socialization skills. Number 2, curriculum compacting allows teachers to condense the curriculum to reduce repetition. A standard curriculum which repeats material the gifted student has already learned can result in frustration and boredom. By using compacting, the teacher has extra time to introduce new material or add enrichment opportunities, such as in-depth investigation of a topic of interest. Studies have shown that as much as 50% to 70% of a standard curriculum can be removed for gifted learners without affecting test scores or student performance, and in fact, sometimes even increases student performance as they thrive on the challenge. Number 3, grouping places gifted students in classes with other students of similar abilities and has been shown to benefit them academically as well as socially. Grouping allows students to learn alongside others who learn at similar rates, possess similar levels of knowledge, and share similar goals, resulting in a peer group where students can challenge one another. Because of the unique challenges of gifted children, some states like Ohio, West Virginia, and Pennsylvania limit the number of children in a gifted classroom to 20 or fewer. Number 4, another important practice in gifted education is teacher training. Teachers serving the gifted population must be trained to meet their needs with appropriate teaching methods. Virginia law requires that school districts provide professional development based on teacher competencies related to gifted education. The NIGC recommends specifically that teachers of gifted children be trained to recognize differences in learning styles, developmental milestones, and cognitive affective characteristics of gifted children, including those from diverse cultural backgrounds, to design appropriate curricula that provide gifted children with accelerated learning, depth of subject, and opportunities for creative thinking, and to learn, to use evidence-based instructional strategies in teaching of gifted children. Over the past year or so, Hampton City Schools has implemented new programs, including the Academies of Hampton, which have changed the face of education in our schools. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the school board of the unique needs of gifted learners, as well to ensure the HCS continues to support opportunities for all of our students to excel. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will move on to Item 6, which is deliberation, which include Items 6.01 through Item 6.16, starting with, I believe, Ms. Nancy Reeves, the trained grievance hearing officer item.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The school board pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1309 and 311 has elected to have employee grievances heard by a hearing officer. And so, the last time that our pool of hearing officers were trained was about five years ago. In March of this year, a new pool of hearing officers was trained and came to an all-morning training. They were trained to be able to serve not only Hampton, but for other jurisdictions, from Henrico to James City, Williamsburg, and Newport News in Hampton. And these 10 officers, the list of them who have been trained is attached to the memorandum that I provided to you, and I suggest that you all adopt that new list. What happens in practice with the hearing officers is when there is a grievance hearing that is needed by either a teacher or a non-certificated employee, approximately two or three hearing officers are selected by either the Director of HR or in conjunction with consulting with me, and we try to figure out whether or not there would be any conflict with that hearing officer hearing a particular employee grievance, as to whether or not they would have had any contact with that employee. And number 2, scheduling. So there's usually two or three that are sort of in line, knowing that they have kind of grievance in a while. So that's why having a fairly wide pool is fairly helpful, to have 10, so that we can not continue to use the same hearing officer over and over, for example, and make certain that we can find schedules. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to help you all with that.
Any questions or remarks or comments from board members? Okay. The only comment that I have, I know you alluded to it earlier in regards to ensuring that Hampton City School will make a decision in selecting hearing officers in a fair and equitable manner, based on hearing officers' availability, as you said, you know, making sure that, you know, one hearing officer is not being selected over another, and making sure that there's no conflict of interests, as you indicated so clearly. So thank you so much, Ms. Reeves, for that clarification. So this item then will be moved to action. If there's no objection from board members, Ms. Mugler?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move this item to action for tonight. Can we do that? We have.
Is there a need for us to move it to action for tonight, Ms. Reeves?
That's your prerogative.
Okay. If it's the will of the board, is it?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Mugler, and seconded by Mr. Kilgore, that we move deliberation, Item 6.01, which is trained grievance hearing officers, and items for action. Therefore, that will become 7.09. Is that correct? Okay. My pen isn't working right now. 7.09 grievance.
I believe we have to vote before it actually becomes 7.09.
Okay. I'm just writing it down. And so, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. All right, up next, we have deliberation item, and I will put these in categories, 6.02 to 6.13, I believe that is Dr. John Cagiano, and these are just five-year review. Dr. Cagiano?
Yes, sir. Came before the board not too long ago to share the purpose for the review, as well as suggested changes from the Policy Review Committee for deliberation items, as you stated, Mr. Chair, 6.02 through 6.13, and would be happy to entertain any additional questions, perhaps, in reference to any of those, any and all of those policies.
Are there any questions or comments from board members for Dr. Cagiano? All right, Dr. Cagiano, good job.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Item 6.14 through Item 6.16, which are once again five-year review, and we have Ms. Sonia McKeaton.
The first policy was before you several weeks ago, and we had a couple of questions presented from one of the board members. We took it off the agenda to have further discussion with our school board attorney, Nancy Reeves. We believe that the policy is appropriate as it was originally presented. There should be no concerns with those recommended changes.
Okay. And can you state the concern that the board member had regarding that particular policy?
Basically, that there's a statute.
Statute.
That would suggest that possibly the, that we may be out of compliance.
Okay.
But we have a policy with regard to our long-term suspended students, but this policy is talking about the admission of long-term suspended students from other divisions. And so, the policy was written with the same format and procedure that we follow for students who are coming to us, long-term students that we actually, long-term, the policy was written for students who come to us from other divisions that are long-term, and that is not our practice. So certainly, the recommended change is most appropriate.
Okay. And I know the board member, that was Joe, and Joe, is that suitable?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Ms. McKeaton? All right, Ms. McKeaton.
The other two were simply up for the five-year review, and we have no recommended changes after going before Policy Review Committee. We believe that it is fairly comprehensive and no need to change any at this time.
Okay. So these three items will be moved forward for action, for items for action at our next board here.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much, Ms. McKeaton.
Thank you.
Up next is deliberation first read, and.
We have action.
Item for action.
It's 1958. Okay. Item 7, items for action, is there a motion to take this as a group?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we consider Item 7.1 separately, please.
Okay.
We might consider grouping some of the others, but.
All right.
This is significant on its own. I move approval of the, of Item 7.1, which involves our entitlement grants for Title 1, Title 2, Title 3, and Title 4.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore, that we approve Item 7.01, 2018-2019 enrichment grants. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
And so, we have Item 7.02 through 7.09.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve action Item 7.02 through 7.08.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse, that we approve Item 7.02 through 7.08. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Mugler?
I move approval of Item 7.09, which is the list of trained grievance hearing officers.
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Ms. Henry, that we approve Item 7.09, which is the hearing, which is the training, trained grievance officers. Is there a, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Well, thank you all so much for that assistance. Next, we move on to Item 8, which is deliberation first read. We have several, Item 8.01 through Item 8.06, and Ms. Goral, our Beth Mayor, isn't here, so I'm assuming that Dr. Cagiano will go into details in regards to these first-read policies.
Yes, good evening again. I'll take the first policy, IIBDA first, reconsideration of instructional materials, that is up for five-year review. No substantive changes suggested, as you can see, just updating the title. The Director of Information Literacy Services is the Director of Information Literacy, and that is on the first page, as well as the second page, and those are the only suggested changes for policy IIBDA.
Just a point of clarification on that, the.
Just a point of clarification on that, the policy chart doesn't, the policy chart says there are no suggested changes.
Oh, okay.
The chart needs to be updated.
Okay, we can take care of that.
Good evening again.
I have the next two policies.
GCBB is our policy on athletic and extracurricular supplements. This is a five-year review, and we have, we have some minimal edits to it. We are updating the application process, not so much updating it as removing the old process. In the past, everything was done on paper. The application process for coaching positions and for extracurricular activity positions is now electronic through our frontline Appletrak system. And so, we just removed the reference to the letter, updated some of the language, so it's all present tense, and we did modify the approval process. The permission for someone to receive more than three supplements, be it coaching or extracurricular or a combination of the two, goes through the executive director, typically for high schools, occasionally at the middle school level. And then, we also made some updates to the legal references. And then, the next policy is GCN, and that's our policy on performance evaluation. Again, this is a five-year review. We have updated the legal references, and if you look on page two of the policy, we have changed some language to reflect a revision to our performance evaluation process in terms of how often formal observations are done for probationary teachers. And those are the only changes for these two policies.
Thank you so much, Ms. Reeves.
You're welcome.
And next up, we have Mr. Eagle, John Eagle.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The policy in front of you, IIBG, it was actually a typo on the agenda, I just did not see until tonight, it's actually IIBG, regarding computer software copyright laws and reviewing this. It looked to me like the industry has really moved along the last several years, and I don't think this has been actually reviewed in a little over five years. But as you're probably well aware, in this day and age, everybody's connected to the Internet, and it's sort of the standard practice for most software developers to not only include a license key with software, like they have traditionally done, but that is registered through the Internet. So it's practically impossible, really, to have certain kinds of copyright violation. Just as an example, you're all familiar with the App Store. You can purchase an app on the App Store and download it to your iPad, and you can download it to your phone, but you try to download it to your friend's phone, that's not going to work. So the industry really has changed the way things work, and this policy was designed around an era when we did keep backup copies of software in a cabinet somewhere. I did check with some of my peers, I checked with the VSBA. The VSBA has since eliminated this policy as well. The more broader issues, the more important issue, and that is one of copyright infringement in general, not just software copyright, which is why we wanted to look at EGAAA as well. And with that, that did match what the VSBA had in place. We made one minor revision just to make sure that the title was corrected in regards to who you report copyright violations to, or if you have questions about copyright in general.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Eagle.
And up next for items, we, student transportation, Mr. Wells?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Smith. I come before you to ask for, to add some language into policy EEAA for student transportation. If I could draw your attention to the first page, right under policy detail, the language that we would like to add is right there in that second sentence where it says, "Transportation will be provided from one designated pickup address to one designated delivery address as long as the residential address or daycare is within the school zone." However, neither the pickup address nor the delivery address may be a parent's place of business or work address. And then, also, under students with disabilities, that first paragraph, we would like to change in that second sentence there where it says, "Individualized education plan," we would like to change that to program in that particular policy. And also, if I may draw your attention to the page two, where that second paragraph is talking about transportation will be provided to Baron Fundamental School students for kindergarten students, I'm sorry, their siblings. That particular paragraph, we would like to take that out because it's redundant, it's right there in that second paragraph under elementary students. It's the same verbiage, so I'm asking that we remove that, that one particular paragraph because we already have it right there under elementary students, grades one through, through five. And then, also, the only other language I'm asking that we consider revising is still that individualized education plan, and just use the acronym IEP, and/or if we need to spell it out, just change that again to individualized education program.
Ms. Henry?
One question. It says, "Transportation will be provided from one designated pickup address to one designated delivery address." Are they, do they need to be the same address?
What I'm referring to is like, in the mornings, kids may catch the bus from their regular bus stop, and then, we have certain schools who may have kids going to an after-school program that's within that school zone that we drop them off, such as Friends of Jesus, I'm thinking, I know, Phoenix and Child Care, so it'd have to be within that school zone that we would drop them off for that after-school program.
But I can't say, I want you to pick them up at my house today and drop them off at grandma's house this afternoon. So, yeah, that's...
No, ma'am, because what...
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm not sure that the policy says you can't do that. If you're going to say, "I can be picked up," that's just, we can think about it.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Because I know you can't pick up at mom's house and deliver to grandma's house.
Right.
So we will include Dr. Smith in this conversation so we can get the, Ms. Nancy Reeves...
We just need to think about it.
Yeah. So we will have conversation with Dr., follow her, Dr. Smith and Ms. Reeves, to make sure that we have clear language in the policy.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just had one question. Dr., oh, almost called you Dr. Wells, wow.
Well, he's impressive.
I just had a question, and it, I wouldn't say it relates to the revisions that are here, but I'm looking at the part where it says, "Elementary students, grade one through five," and it says that the parent or designee is expected to accompany the student to and from the bus stop, and I was just asking, because I, I mean, my brother's seven, no, sorry, I lied, he's six, and he's a first-grade student. How many parents do walk their student to that bus stop, and is that a concern? And the reason why I bring that up is because, could that also go through revision and make that a requirement at least to a grade because of that could be a safety concern? I was just, I was just wondering.
Right. Right now, we require pre-K and kindergarten students' parents to accompany their students to the bus stop, as well as picking them up in the afternoon for delivery, first grade through 12th grade, of course, the parents are not present. Please know that when we do have students who feel that they're, you know, apprehensive and do not want to get off, I mean, it doesn't matter to me if it's a 12th grader, we automatically take those students back to school, but it is the kindergarten and pre-K students that we have to have someone present.
It's required by the Virginia Administrative Code.
Okay. I was just asking.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Reeves.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
All right. And the only other thing that I had that we wanted to add, because I know oftentimes the complaints and the phone calls we get from parents is that piece of the displaced children and the McKinney-Vento, so I just wanted to add that because oftentimes, they just don't understand that that's what we fall under, and then, they would have to notify Dr. Copeland in order for us to transport.
Any question concerning McKinney-Vento? I know the board member, each board member is very familiar with the McKinney-Vento law and so forth, so, Mr. Wells, thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
And if we have further questions, we will make sure that we get in contact with Dr. Smith and Nancy Reeves to get some information to you in regards to the language. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All righty. Next on the agenda is information, which is 9.01, information sharing. The next meeting will be held at 6:30 PM on June the 20th, 2018, at the Rupert Sargent Building, which is located at 1 Franklin Street. The reorganization meeting will be held on July the 11th, 2018, at 6:30 PM at Jones Magnet Middle School. At this time, Dr. Smith, do you have any information that we would like to share with board members and the public?
Nope, no further business from the superintendent, thank you.
Any information from board members? Ms. Cherry?
Yes, sir. Just very briefly, I would like to just personally thank and publicly thank the men of the Omega Psi Phi fraternity, the Zeta Omicron chapter. On last Saturday morning, they had a breakfast, a scholarship breakfast, and they actually awarded several thousand dollars to several of our male students who would be graduating. And it was a very inspiring event, something they didn't have to do, but they did, as a way of giving back to this community. They love our students. And the keynote speaker, incidentally, was our newest board member, Dr. Richard Mason, who did a fantastic job, and I was able to bring, on behalf of the board, some comments in terms of how much we appreciate the assistance they provide our students.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr., I know Mr. Xavier has something to say, but before he does that, Mr. Xavier, I would like to call Ms. Robin Ruth or Dr. Cooper to the podium so they can talk about our last week event, Run for the Stage.
Yes, I'm very excited about Race for, Race for the Stage, and Dr. Cooper is our wonderful emcee. Race for the Stage, this is our third year, it's a 5K race, and we raise money for scholarships for our young people who are specifically going to community college. It is an underserved population in terms of scholarship opportunities, and it's a great segue to our dual enrollment program. This year, we were able to, we collect, or we raised over $20,000, and we were able to give away $10,000 in scholarships, 10 $1,000 scholarships to some of our students across all four of our high schools, and we were able to add this year, and this is an exciting component, we have eight previous recipients who are still attending community college, and they are eligible for a $500 additional scholarship if they bring in their, excuse me, their registration for next year. So we were very, very excited. It's been exciting to see it grow. Thomas Nelson joined us as a sponsor for the first time this year, so just a wonderful testament to community partnerships. And, and we have a member of the, the Mo Spirited team with us. She didn't wear her tutu tonight, but it was a great experience.
And it didn't rain on you this time?
It did not rain. Actually, rain would have been welcome. It felt like it was about 95 degrees out there, and Mr. Samuels ran with us.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, so it was a great...
Along with my son. How many participants did we have this year?
We handed out over 300 bibs. So, yes, it was, like I said, it grows every year. There were probably 200 of those bibs that were handed out were people who participated and either walked or ran, or a little bit of both.
And it was such an exciting, spirited, filled day at the Madison Trail, so thank you all so much for what you do to make sure that, that event is successful. And I'm going to challenge Dr. Cagiano to participate next year, so Doc, you and I are going to go at it next year. I know I don't have a chance.
With tutu?
And, no, I'm not going to wear a tutu, and we're also going to challenge Dr. Haynes. Yeah, we're going to challenge Dr. Haynes at this time, so, Mr. Williams?
I'm glad you're not challenging me, because I don't run, so I'll leave that to you. I just wrote down a couple of things, and one, I just wanted to start off by saying thank you again for allowing me to serve this year, and I look forward to serving with Jeremy Taylor as the alternate for next year. Kind of started off in Hampton City Schools, working over at the news station, so shout out to all those people, they're hanging in there with a 1017, good gracious. So I'm glad to say I've had my first three-hour-long school board meeting. Also, I wanted to highlight, we talked about athletics today, and we had some really good things going on, the spring sports this year, both at Kegaton and at Hampton. Our Kegaton softball team went to the state quarterfinals, and I don't know how long that's been, but it happened, they lost 4-0, that is okay, though, but they made it to the state quarterfinals, and they ended the, the year off with a 20-5 record and ended up ranking 77 in the state. So they did a fantastic job. Also, have to talk about the greatest school, Hampton High School, and our baseball team. We ended at the regional semifinals and ended the year at 19-8 and ranked 140 in the state, so, get out, let's watch some baseball next year, I'm going to make sure I say that again, watch some baseball. Also, the Academic Awards Bank was really nice, and I really enjoyed it, and thank you so much to Dr. Woods for putting that on. But something that was interesting that me and, I always want to call you Dr. Kilgore, that me and Mr. Kilgore were talking about at the table is that our fine arts are doing a great job, and so I wanted to thank Dr. Smith for including the fine arts addition in the budget this year, because honestly, we're seeing the benefits of students taking fine arts in our school system and how it can contribute to their overall success. And lastly, lastly, I just wanted to say that, you know, we're at the end of the school year, and graduations take place next week, but actually, for our students and the high school world, our last day is tomorrow for those that do not take exams, so I'm one of those students, and so I am officially a senior effective tomorrow. So I just wanted to say congratulations, of course, graduations are next week, so I can say it again, but congratulations to all those students that are being promoted and those that are graduating, so we've had another successful year, and I look forward to next year.
And thank you so much, Xavier, for sharing your remarks and comments. And at this time, our meeting is adjourned.